Effective person there. Good on Vivian.
Very inspiring.
Yeah, but we'll see, talk to some other competitors later in the program, but it's not always about winning, is it? Sometimes people can sort of re-engage with life by being involved in sports.
Yeah, I think it's that. It's about participating. I think that's the most important thing, that they get out there and do it. What we find, and I think, and I know Kathy would agree to it, are the friendships that are being developed through this and the camaraderie and where...
That's a very important part.
Yeah. You could walk into a track, you know, 15 years ago and all of a sudden Kathy and Bert now have this whole other extended family in the track club. And I think that's almost more important than winning the medal.
Are there volunteer opportunities too? I mean, every organization is short volunteers. I mean, someone, pardon the pun, can sort of dip their toe in, so to speak.
Absolutely. We've had a lot, a number of people there volunteered, just wanting to see what it's like.
Right.
And then the next year they'll come out and do it. Because I think to somebody it's intimidating.
Well, sure.
You're exposing yourself.
Of course.
You know, you're putting yourself on the line. So that's a great way to just get your feet wet on.
Okay. Do you find yourself sort of planning your year around the various events?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Well, now, as a statewide organization, are the meets held all up and down the state?
They are, right now they're held in, I believe it's eight communities. Between, mostly here in Southern California. There are two in Northern California right now. And the other six here in Southern California.
Okay. Excuse me, it's time for a short break. When we return, we'll resume our discussion of the California State Senior Olympics. Please stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Hey buddy! Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire! Like the one behind me!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn!
Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate tailgaters.
Tailgating causes crashes. Back off. Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, the California State Senior Olympics held recently in the Los Angeles area. Our guests are event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and athlete Kathy Bergen. Thank you again for joining us. Well, we were just discussing not only the volunteer help that's needed to run something on a track, I mean, it takes a lot of people. But this is, this is a dot org, this is a foundation, so donations are important as well.
We could not run, or do what we do, we couldn't run the event without significant sponsorship. And I would say probably 25% of the people who participate donate in some...
Right.
And we're nonprofits, so it's all tax deductible.
Tax deductible, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah. It's an expensive event to run.
I'm sure.
Our budget is about, depending upon a qualifying or non-qualifying year, but the budget runs about $90,000 to $95,000.
I gotcha. Well, that's a drop in the bucket for Nike.
We'd love it, absolutely.
Well, Mr. Knight, if you're listening, this is a...
Please!
Actually, it's a good cause.
It's a great cause.
But with track and field, there's not much expense beyond a good set of sneakers and...
Well, I believe the expense to the organization is for the officials, for the venue...
Of course.
For the certification, I think it has...
Right. No, I understand that. But for the individual competitor, I mean, if you're race walking, wearing a pair of shorts and a tank top, right?
Very unlike golf, where golf is...
Whoa.
You know, equipment-wise.
Really expensive.
With cycling, you know, some of our cyclists, their bikes are worth, in the neighborhood of $5,000.
I know, yeah. But they are amazing, these carbon fiber, weigh five pounds, that's really astonishing. Now, in the first half of our program, we watched the swimming competition. Let's take a look at senior athletes competing in racquetball, badminton, basketball, and bowling events. Eighty-six-year-old Bill Tom competed in the Worldwide Olympics in 1956. Then as a senior, he took up badminton.
I teach junior high school here for eight years. One of the colleagues, she played badminton. So at noon time, he said, "Hey, this is Tom. Come and play some game at noon. We'll pay for ice cream after lunch." I was buying him ice cream all semester. Then the year I won the Taiwan, I learned a few things about the Asian game. I came back, he buying me ice cream.
Wow, that looks like fun. It seems that they're having a good time.
They love it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. There's so many that look forward to it every year.
Well, I'm sure. And then, like you Kathy, you can look to really having an edge when you hit that next step, age qualifying level.
I bet the Pasadena Senior Games is always my favorite. I think because of the wonderful experience we had for the first time when I met Cynthia and several other, the competitors that I'm still seeing now.
Well, how many events do you participate in per year?
Track meets? Probably about 10 when I'm healthy.
Wow, that's great. Now, I would imagine you have to have some special health concerns. I mean, you want people to be fit, obviously going into this, but sports injuries are common at any age.
They're very common. And one of the prerequisites that we have at all the high-profile events is have medical, emergency medical team, a staff on-site.
That's very important.
And they're hidden things. I mean, we have had a couple of people, we've lost a couple of people.
Right. But people shouldn't be intimidated by that.
Absolutely not.
I mean, you know, you get up in the morning and you can fall in the bathroom.
Yeah. I mean, the worst thing that happened this year is a woman basketball player broke a fingernail.
Oh, my gosh!
Not a word, that's, yeah.
A calamity.
It was, it was! For her, it was.
Well, before we leave, again, the contact information to reach you, Cynthia.
Is the website at www.pasadena senioren center.org, or they can email me at cynthia r@pasadena senioren center.org.
Fabulous. Unfortunately, our time is up for today's Aging in L.A. program. Thanks so much to our guests from the California State Olympics program, event organizer Cynthia Rosedale and world-class athlete Kathy Bergen. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. For older adults and seniors who want to stay healthy and independent, the National Institute of Health recommends four types of exercises. Strength and weight-bearing exercises to build muscle and increase metabolism; balance exercises to improve posture, strengthen muscles, and help prevent falls; stretching exercises to improve freedom of movement; then endurance exercises such as walking and swimming to improve heart health and increase metabolism. Always, always check with your doctor before starting an exercise program. Now, if you are interested in trying a particular sport or activity, join a club and enjoy the company of like-minded adults who enjoy the same activity. Many clubs will offer you a free trial period so that you can find out if it's right for you. Find inexpensive or free exercise classes for older adults at your local senior centers, YMCA's, and community colleges. Try to be active for at least 30 minutes each day, walking your dog, doing yard work, walking around the mall, and even doing housework or gardening will help. Gentle yoga and Tai Chi can be good for the mind as well as the body. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching. We'll see you the next time. Cynthia, thank you so much for making time.
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti, and I'm proud to represent Hollywood on the Los Angeles City Council. There are so many interesting things to see here, some famous, some less famous but just as interesting. Today, we'll show you one of each. So let's go on location at one of Hollywood's landmarks. The Kodak Theatre on Hollywood Boulevard has been home of the Academy Awards since it opened in 2001. During the Oscars, this street becomes the world's most famous red carpet. Outside the theater, visitors can check out the awards walk that honors all the Best Picture winners. Starting in 2010, the Kodak will become the permanent home of a new Cirque du Soleil show about Hollywood, of course. Take a tour of the theater and sit in the seat of your favorite Oscar nominee. For more information, visit www.kodaktheater.com. After you've seen the Kodak Theatre, take a walk down the street and check out another Hollywood locale. Just down the street from the place where the world's most respected actors gather to celebrate achievements in film, acting students at the Stella Adler Academy are also honing their craft. Named for the actress who started the academy in 1949, this facility includes small theaters where visitors can see...
Good morning. It's April 12th. Welcome to the John F. R. Chambers. Mr. Reyes is here. Everyone's here. We have 10 members, I believe, correct? Madam Clerk, we have 10 members. We have a quorum. Let's turn on Channel 35. Good morning, everybody. Madam Clerk, we're going to get started in just a few moments, please. April 12th, 2011, welcome to the John F. R. Chambers, Los Angeles City Council, in Historic City Hall. We're here for today's council meeting. We have now 10 members. So I'm going to turn this over, Mr. City Attorney, to the President of the City Council, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Caress, Gregorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Alacon moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Obolutions.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Excuse me, Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Would you like to do the flax suit?
Absolutely. Actually, if we could ask everybody to rise for a Tuesday, we do our pledge of allegiance. If I could ask Mr. Reyes to lead us today?
Thank you for the privilege, Council President. Everybody, please stand, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If we can run through the items. Colleagues, if there's items you'd like to call special, now is going to be the time to do so. Any items that have not yet had a public hearing in committee will be called special by cards from the public automatically. If we can go to the first item, please.
Item number one is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 14. Notice for public hearing, that item has been requested to be continued to April 26th.
Okay, without objection. We'll continue that till the 26th of this month. Next item, please.
Items 2 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 2 and 3 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold them on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commission appointments on the desk. And we are awaiting still a couple of members to constitute 12 members to go through our ordinances, so let's go ahead while we're awaiting Mr. Wesson and Mr. Weezer. Let's hold 4 and 5 on the desk. Next items are 6 through 19, colleagues. Any specials 6 through 19? 19 for Mr. Alacon. 6 for Mr. Reyes. And 16 for Mr. Parks. Are there specials, colleagues? Mr. Alacon called 19 special already. So we just have 6, 16, and 19. If there are no other specials, still number 19, Mr. Alacon's called special.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and please open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Yes. 12 forthwith, without objection, from Mr. Labange. Next items, please.
Items 20 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any objection to considering those? If not, those are before us, 20 through 26, and we do not have any cards on these, so we'll close the public hearings on those items. I'll call 21 special. And any other specials, Mr.?
26 special and forthwith on 23.
26 special?
Yes. He just called it.
Other specials? I'll call 20 as well. No other specials, that leaves us 22 through 25. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. And forthwith on, which one, Mr. Parks? It was 25? 23. We'll send forthwith without objection. We'll go now to our general public comment. Oh, sorry, we have enough people for the ordinances. Let's go ahead before that and take up 4 and 5, please. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Terrence Edwards is our first speaker in public comment. Terrence Edwards here for general public comment. Come on down. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Terrence Edwards. I'm an apprentice with IBEW, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Farmer's Field. I'm currently out of work. Should, I hope to be working soon. This project would create many, many jobs for out-of-work building tradespeople. And it would definitely help with the revitalization of downtown Los Angeles. And I just, I think of all the other buildings and businesses that it could create, and even the jobs for people that need to run these businesses. And really, I just hope you'd consider, consider it in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Our next speaker is Rocky Pellicino. Rocky Pellicino, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, the council, my name is William Spencer, I'm with Local 416 Reinforcing Ironworkers, I am in support of Farmers Field, the project will create tens of thousands of good, middle-class jobs, having a football stadium in downtown will bring more business, conventions, and tourism to LA, which means more good jobs and a stronger local economy for everyone. And please don't forget about the Wilshire Grand, thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you very much, now from San Pedro City Hall, we're gonna go out to Van Nuys City Hall, Marion Fogler, followed by Donna Pearlman, followed by Rick Nightingale.
What the hell is Donna doing, I mean Marion? Um, she's been delayed, I didn't know-
Well, I'm calling her now, here we go, I'm giving you a shot, here you go, Marion's been called, let's have Donna Pearlman-
But she'll be there in a second, can I talk first? The hell she comes-
Yeah, you're called, relax, speak now.
Don't get excited, Donna.
Wait a second.
Is Van Nuys still there, here we go.
I'm still here, damn her. Okay, anyway, I was gonna thank Mr. Garcetti for paying his fine out of his pocket, the others should do the same, but he's not here right now. First, I'm glad federal government did not shut down, our hearing office, social security was going, our hearing office, social security was gonna be staffed with judges only, no staff, how's that for social security going, going on? And military only half-paid, that's ridiculous, they should put their, they put their life on the line, it's not acceptable. I want to clarify my misspoken thought, you don't have to be disturbed, though it did wake you up, Mr. Krikorian, I did not mean we should fight violently, our government. Our government is beautiful, I would never advocate that, our government is beautiful, politicians not so, I would advocate electing new people in their place. I meant to say, if it's needed, if it was taken over by the UN, if they came to take away your guns, you would not let them, non-violently. Little by little, all liberal politicians wanna take away our rights, ammunition clips, right to carry for gun rage, they just wanna have it for the rich people, and the politicians, and of course, the criminals will always hit the guns, and the gang members too. Just like they chip away at our city employees' rights, adding on new items, making their pay smaller, while city council keeps on spending, like our federal government keeps on spending, example, the 30-10 rail. They're raising the debt cap, that's because if you can't pay this debt, they could just borrow some more. We're having high debt problems, and our rail projects and CRA seem to be top priority of everyone else's expense. How can you ask anyone to sacrifice while you spend more by fiddle-wreath wrong burns? Oklahoma used their sales tax to rebuild the city, after Oklahoma bombing, their sales tax increase went a long, a long way, ours does not. Our politicians need to implement our money better.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marion Fogler.
Thank you, this is you, Labange, to the Dennis Zine, I call, you know, he, he's a real whipper, he's a strict one, he's going after everybody, all the public now, and I know he's, and I don't trust him, if anybody, the United States of America shouldn't trust Dennis Zine. He's of Lebanese background, so we oughta check his background.
Talk about issues, personalize it, please, ma'am.
Folks, they're up in fire over there, you know what they're gonna do to us here in the United States of America, I'm an American-born here, so if anybody doesn't trust anybody, it should be Dennis Zine shouldn't be trusted, okay? You know, this is, this council doesn't trust the public, period, and I can tell, by the way they talk, by the way they treat the public when they come up here and speak, you cut people off, left and right, and I know you are after our guns. Okay, you gotta hear me now, folks, they want your guns, and they want your lives, they want your money, they don't care what it takes, take a look at the poor guy that got beaten up at Dodger Stadium, all the rich, all they wanna do is get the money from the poor and the middle-class. That's the old name again, folks, J.D. Morgan, he got a 50% pay raise, folks. These guys, yeah, city council wants pay raises, I'm sure they're gonna get theirs, then they all covered by the Ethics Commission, the CRA, they get kickbacks. You people just, you voters don't, are very naive, very, very closed-minded, you don't check things out. What happened in Europe, hundreds of years ago, they're doing it again here. They're taking from the poor and the middle-class, they're, they're taking apart the middle-class. If you check Europe, they have nothing left over there, and they're gonna, and this is what they're doing. Thirty-four lives lost by Caro Caress, that's nothing when you take away the guns, it'll be thousands of people dying a day.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. And now, Mr. Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale, yeah, I see Governor Brown's coming down here to California and trying to support his, have the people vote for increasing our taxes and so forth. You notice that he's out here beating the drum, but when he had a chance to do something about the pensions for the guards and so forth, he didn't touch none of that. He stays away from all of it, the teachers' union, you're crying, the teachers are crying about the home money there, but they'll give millions of dollars. Look at how much money for Meg Whitman that they spent, so she wouldn't, millions of dollars. But no, they turn around and do the rest of it, they give it all to the politicians. How much did the school board want? They get over 40% of every dollar that goes up to Sacramento, and that's not including the bond measures that everything has been passed. They're getting so much money, it's just unbelievable, but then it goes back to the sanctuary cities. If this wasn't a sanctuary city, Los Angeles and San Francisco, things would be different too, wouldn't it? That we wouldn't be spending all this money. Feel sorry for they wanna abandon their own country because their country can't give them anything, so they come here. Then you people on the council, you just give it all away, just like everything else. It's just unbelievable. But I'll tell ya, Brown, this is crock, do not vote for this, this pay increase, let them cut. They have been giving these programs for so long, and give this away, and give that away, nobody wants to work, you make more money on those programs than you do the other. They give you a place to live, no charge, you can turn around and go to the head of the line, of your own welfare at the hospital, no charge. That's a good deal. These people have, these girls have done the babies, they get three, they can support themselves with about $35 a month, that's a good deal, thank you.
Thank you very much, back here at the John F. R. Chambers in Los Angeles City Hall, Arminak Nuvajerian, please.
Respectable city council members, you fellow Angelinos, as a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, actually, I fight for social justice, racial integration, technological revolution, environmental protection, I am an agent of progressive change, to uphold public welfare of Californians. The slogan of American revolution is to house corrupt incumbents and imperialist offenders who rip off government coffers and abuse power, build a new football stadium for corrupt influence, Anshul Entertainment Group, you know, is actually, is wasting, wasteful spending, you know? And I believe that Anshul Entertainment Group, according to Los Angeles Times, actually paid free, you know, stadium tickets to Mayor Antonio Agosa, according to a recent edition of Los Angeles Times. Mayor Agosa will ignore any phone calls, you know, from, you know, from me, and his staff, you know, ignores any attempt, we want me to have an appointment with Mayor Agosa, to lobby progressive agenda. Recent Los Angeles City temporary urgency order, ordinance number 181-069, to legalize illegal marijuana sales, under hypocritical pretext of compassionate act, violates U.S. Control Substances Act, adopted by U.S. Congress in 1974. This act prohibits possession and sale of marijuana, the harmful narcotic, with psychotic and mind-altering properties. I believe that fate of, the sad fate of City of Bell corrupt council members, who were prosecuted for money laundering, is a precedent with my end corrupt rule of narcomobuses in the City of Los Angeles, when it was here. As Los Angeles City Council ignores, will allow, one majority of California voters to reject legalization of marijuana, as Proposition 19 to legalize marijuana was rejected by 56% of Bell's cast, according to MSNBC at least. I conclude that council member tried to profit from illegal dope dealing, and almost recent marijuana legislation just proves next, next time that.
Thank you very much, Walter Bechtel. Followed by William Rowley, and Adrian Olin.
Good morning, I guess I have to say something again about Farmers Field, I don't hear anybody saying why that can't be built out towards Lancaster. I do hear a lot of people in the news saying, that if you build it downtown, you're gonna create a traffic jam problem, and other problems that we thought we'd gotten rid of, crime rate will increase, et cetera. The guy that was up here a minute ago said he represented all of Los Angeles County, all of Orange County, how is that not gonna help his workers still, if they don't just build that thing out towards Lancaster? And, if you build it out towards Lancaster, the property out there is cheaper, and you might even be able to start a little community out there, it'll also help promote the, the, what do they call that, the one highway there between Palmdale and Victorville, that is known as Death Alley, you could help to fund the fixing of that, et cetera. I don't see any reason why it can't be built out there, the only thing I can infer is that the only reason these workers don't want it, they only wanna build downtown instead of Lancaster, is because if they build it in Lancaster, they can't get home at four o'clock in the afternoon, it'll take two hours more, extra, to drive back home, and that's just terrible, having to drive them extra hours to go to work every day. I think that's ridiculous, there's lots of workers, I'm sure, who'd be willing to put a couple extra hours in, if they, and also, if the project is gonna be extended, if they can build more houses, I don't see where the extra employment isn't gonna benefit, this just doesn't make sense to build it downtown, don't eliminate the project, just put it somewhere else, that seems to make more sense to me, I don't understand what the problem is, thank you.
Thank you very much, William Ray.
Good morning, council members, my name is Bill Rowley, and I'm a 25-year resident of the City of Silmar, California, and a 40-plus-year member of the IATSE Local 33, which is currently headquartered in Burbank, California. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and the membership of IATSE Local 33, in support of the Anshul Entertainment Group's proposed new Farmers Field Stadium and Convention Center replacement facility. I, in the membership of IATSE Local 33, boldly support this project for the following reasons. Local 33 currently enjoys a great contract relationship with AEG, an employer-labor relationship which has produced significant numbers of good, middle-class jobs, with good pension and health benefits for the membership of the union, of this union for the last decade. The Farmers Field Stadium Convention Center West Hall replacement project will certainly produce, upon completion, significant new working opportunities for the membership of my organization, but during the construction phase, if approved, this project will create thousands of good-paying, good-benefited jobs in the construction industry as well. Certainly, a long overdue tonic for the economic woes currently faced by the city and the working people of Los Angeles City and County. Post-construction, this project will certainly redefine the status of Los Angeles as a convention, business, entertainment, and sports mecca, while at the same time, creating and sustaining a wide-ranging jobs base, which will nourish the economic health of the city, county, and its citizens for many years to come. In summation, that is why I, in the membership of IATSE Local 33, in the strongest possible terms, urge you all as council members of the Los Angeles City Council, to support and approve this project. Let us give the City of Los Angeles and its hard-working citizens a fighting chance to overcome the economic cards they have been respectively dealt. My organization and I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit of AEG and its partners for taking this huge economic chance on Los Angeles, I hope we collectively have the foresight and courage not to squander this golden opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, good to see you from Local 78, Adrian Olin, is that correct? Excuse me, Adrian.
Good morning, council members, my name is Adrian Olin.
Thank you.
I'm with Farmers Local 78, and I've been unemployed for about a year and a half. I'm in support of the football stadium that you've been considering. I think it's just great for the city, I grew up here, I have family here, and, I'm sorry, I just, I just wanna see the city grow, I mean, I just, you know, I have a lot of friends and family that, you know, some of them have moved out for whatever reasons, but, not me, I love this city, and I want all my, you know, union brothers and sisters to live out here as well. It's just, you know, there's a lot to do out here, I can't express how much, and, sorry.
Don't be sorry, you came here and you made your statement, which is important. Give Adrian a big hand for coming down here right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian, got that. Next, Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh blogging in Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. I arrive, this is, it's 10:39, it's 10:35 on my watch, as I speak, I just came from the Ethics Commission meeting, I have news for you, they are in the process of- thousands of good-paying, good-benefited jobs in the construction industry as well. Certainly, a long overdue topic for the economic woes currently faced by the city and the working people of Los Angeles City and County. Post-construction, this project will certainly redefine the status of Los Angeles as a convention, business, entertainment, and sports mecca, while at the same time creating and sustaining a wide-ranging jobs base which will nourish the economic health of the city, county, and its citizens for many years to come. In summation, that is why I and the membership of IATSE Local 33, in the strongest possible terms, urge you all as council members of the Los Angeles City Council to support and approve this project. Let us give the city of Los Angeles and its hard-working citizens a fighting chance to overcome the economic cards they have been respectively dealt. My organization and I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit of AEG and its partners for taking this huge economic chance on Los Angeles. I hope we collectively have the foresight and courage not to squander this golden opportunity.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good to see you from Local 78. Adrian Orland, is that correct? Excuse me, Adrian.
Good morning, council members. My name is Adrian O'Glin.
Thank you.
I'm at Farmers Local 78, and I've been unemployed for about a year and a half. I'm in support of the football stadium that you've been considering. I think it's just great for the city. I grew up here. I have family here, and, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to see the city grow. I mean, I just, you know, I have a lot of friends and family that, you know, some of them have moved out for whatever reasons, but not me. I love this city, and I want all my, you know, union brothers and sisters to live out here as well. It's just, you know, there's a lot to do out here. I can't express how much, and, sorry.
Don't be sorry. You came here and you made your statement, which is important. Give Adrian a big hand for coming down here right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Got that. Next, Mr. Walsh, please.
I arrive, this is, it's 10:39, it's 10:35 on my watch as I speak. I just came from the Ethics Commission meeting. I have news for you. They are in the process of handing out huge fines to the mayor. That's $20,000. To Eric Garcetti, $4,800. Jose Weza, $2,100. Herb Wesson, $3,900. Cardenas, $2,500. What's amazing is they're handing out a fine to Oscar. Yes, that Oscar. The award statue. The Oscar, $13,000. Grammy, $8,300. Black Entertainment TV, $3,900. And the Emmys, $7,900. They've done an excellent job up there. What we are seeing here is the only commission that stands up to you people, and it's just beginning. FPPC is up there, and they are, state people, they are testifying now. And it's just the beginning of the unraveling of the corruption that's up here. You want to know what's happening? You want to know? I want you to know that Eric Garcetti is a lawbreaker, officially, right now. Weza, lawbreaker. You will pay a fine. Unfortunately, there is no prison. Herb Wesson, lawbreaker. Tony Cardenas, lawbreaker. HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 successful server requests per month, 1.2 million per year. Come to us if you want to know what's happening in this city. Ethics Commission, viva Ethics Commission.
And this completes public comment from the public that state their opinions and comments. We thank you. Now, we're going to go to the first item called Special. Madam Clerk.
Item number two, which is a commission appointment of Mr. Anthony Braswell to the Board of Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Mr. Braswell, would you please take the center table? He was in committee this morning. He's a great leader for our very own Cedar Sinai, a friend of Susie Marbles, which is good for me. Let's hear it.
My name's Tony Braswell. I am a longtime resident of Los Angeles, California. You might catch a little bit of southern accent in the back because I'm originally from Atlanta, Georgia. In my private life, I work at Cedar Sinai with the Women's Cancer Research Institute, which is now the Women's Cancer Program. I've been there for eight years. The entirety of my volunteer life is committed to Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County. I have just completed a five-year term as the co-chair of the HIV Commission for Los Angeles County and am the third term, third elected term as president of my neighborhood council. So I want to thank my committee chairman, Mr. Labange, all of the city council persons, the mayor, and especially Mr. Vicorian, who is my councilman, for your support in this position. Thank you.
There are no speakers on the queue, so we'll get you right to work. Mr. Rosado, all of the 11th districts, excuse me, Mr. Rosado.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning. So tell me why you're stepping up for this particular commission and what are your goals and objectives?
I think everyone deserves the opportunity for accessible housing and habitation, and I think that the city also has an obligation to protect the rights of the community and the developers. And there's a balance there, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve, to make sure that this balance is always respectful of the citizens and the people who are seeking to develop property.
Disabled access, what does that mean in your mind? Does that mean developers provide the ADA things? Explain what that means, people with disabilities?
The Americans with Disabilities Act ensures that the rights of persons who have physical challenges are respected.
Right.
The enforcement then comes down to the city. So, to me, there's really not a gray area there. The Americans with Disabilities Act is the law, and it has to be respected.
So with that in mind, all developers should be sensitive to that issue as they put their plans in for projects?
They don't have a choice. That's the law.
And your commission is different than the Disability Commission, people with disabilities? It's more in the land development or is it the same commission?
It's, my understanding, this will be all on projects and whether or not they are conforming with the law, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act.
And a little about your background that makes you feel good for this?
I've been in public health since I graduated from college and my two master's programs. I've worked in the industry of HIV since it was just a disease and was not really understood by anyone, even before universal precautions, if that tells you how old I am. But in that time, I've come to respect physical challenges and the need to accommodate everyone and to be sure that the law is respected and that guidelines are adhered to.
Bless you, and thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Braswell, there's no other speakers on the queue, so Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number three is the appointment of Mr. Justin Kim to the City Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a commissioner for planning. Are they present? Is there a city clerk? Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, let me recognize you, Sir Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Mr. Kim. This is your second round?
Yes, it is.
So you're coming back and donating more of your time, with expertise, and I want to thank you for that. Can you just speak a little about your background, what you've already learned, and what you anticipate in this new arena?
Again, my name is Justin Kim.
Move the microphone closer to you, that way it can be better.
My name is Justin Kim. I'm a resident of the City of L.A. for more than 35 years. I held my business, or I have a business in the City of L.A. for more than 20 years. I served as a commissioner for the past six years as a Disabled Access Appeal Commissioner and also Century Planning Commissioners. What I learned so far is basically all the elected officials, you have a lot of tough choices you have to make. You have to deal with all these different issues, you know, balance issues, meaning again, you have to make some key decisions considering all different sides. I expect additional issues that I'm going to be involved, in which I have to be unbiased and impartial, and I'm looking forward to serving as commissioner.
Mr. Kim, I know this, is the planning commission, and I thank you for your hard work in your previous role. This is now the citywide, I understand, so it's a form of graduation, I guess?
Thank you.
But this will go to 2014, and colleagues, I encourage an I-vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, thank you. Mr. Rosado.
Thank you. I was listening intently to what you were saying there. The citywide planning commission brings in, obviously, the entire 15 council districts. My district, which is the 11th district, is the coastal district. We're suffering from an incredible gridlock situation. We get 200,000 cars coming through my district to go to work in Santa Monica every day. But we also have housing issues, and we also have serious development issues. My philosophy, and I just want to get your feedback real quickly, is that a developer goes to immediate neighbors first, goes to neighborhood councils and land use committees and homeowners groups, and then comes to me. It's not about what I want, it's what fits in with character and scale and community. Sometimes the west side is where development happens, even in a recession, because we have the fresh air and the ocean breeze and location, location from a developer standpoint. How do you feel about my philosophy that it should come to us, the electeds, and you, the commission, after a due process of working with community?
By the way, councilman, I lived in Mor Vista.
All right.
Okay. So my sister went to Venice, Gondolier. From my personal experiences, again, west side, quality of living, quality being very important. I know there's a lot of developers, they like to be in west L.A. or west side with a strong household income. But from my experience, again, it's a very unique neighborhood with a lot of concerns and issues, especially, again, going back to quality of living. My personal thought is, again, it's always a balanced approach. You have to look at the all different sides. Most importantly, a lot of residents in that neighborhood.
Thank you. I'm Mor Vista, obviously, so now we're Mor Vista brothers. I look forward to us going to our farmer's market on Grand View together. We have a community group meeting there every weekend on Sunday and interact with some of the community people. We'd love that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosado. No other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, come some of down, Mr. Kim. Good luck to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number six, called special by Mr. Reyes.
We're going to have Mr. Reyes give the opening on this particular item, number six, as we move forward to item number six.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to take a moment to, you know, we have some amazing projects that occur in our district, and this is the Albion site, it's a former dairy site that's been there for decades, right next to Downey Park. So you go over the bridge on the river on Broadway, as you pass into the park, you look to your right, you'll see a significant lot, over three acres, that will be demolished. And it's because we have the owner, Mr. Rich Ross, and Mr. Ron Beakers here. Please stand, sir. I want to thank you, because this is how the private sector works with government in trying to relieve the environment and the pressures in a very park-poor area. We have, he was a real estate negotiator in making sure that, working with our staff from Bureau of Engineering, Rene Curtis, Ali Sykes, Lauren Sue, Megan Whalen, and the Wrecking Park staff, Melinda Gajar and Donnie Wreck staff, as well as Miguel Luna, my staff worked together to make the design, they shepherded the new design, and sensitively immigrates the overused Downey Wreck Center near the river. This is a neighborhood that has close to 30,000 people in one neighborhood, about just over 10,000 people per square mile. So this park is highly needed. I want to thank Chris, where are you, Chris? Please stand. I want to thank you for your hard work from the mayor's office. Chris, he reminds me that his mom grew up in Lincoln Heights, so I know this is a labor of love in seeing this improvement. Colleagues, what you're going to see is a park that's going to be designed to be able to retain stormwater runoff, going to help the connection between Downey Park, expanding the park, creating a location where young people will be able to understand the ecosystem. The first phase of the project will demolish the buildings on-site and get it ready for construction. The second phase, which is still in review, is the water quality improvements, and the third phase will be the park design, which will incorporate several elements of water quality, sustainable practices, sort of need a public space for rest, walk-in recreation. We thank the proper team headed by Kendrick Okuda. Again, Chris Espinoza from the mayor's office, Wing Tam, Shamram Karagany from sanitation for the continued contributions to the project. My goal is that this project become the model for sustainable parks that successfully integrate city green gold seamlessly with the green, with the park future amenities. My office is working with the River Revisation Corporation in reviewing potential grant applications in this project in order to complete the funding for park amenities. So the green lace, the green necklace along the river is beginning, and this is one of the many parks that are being planned along with our new bridges. Thank you very much.
Members, this is a great accomplishment for Mr. Reyes, a great job from Maine, you spring to Broadway and Downey Park. Mr. Reyes, give Mr. Reyes a big hand. It's a great park addition, and I'm proud for the mayor's office. His mother's from Lincoln Heights, my mother's from Lincoln Heights, you're bringing Lincoln Heights back to the river. Good job, Ed. Good job. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, forthwith on that matter. Next item.
Item number 16, called special by Mr. Parks.
Mr. Park.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have the CAO, the CEO, and the city attorney to come up, please? First of all, in reading the committee report, it appears that it's recommending that we have a draft ordinance and then later a economic study. And what I, and one of the things I want to clarify, although we use the term Santa Monica ordinance, it appears, at least in the report in two different places, that they clearly identify that maybe this is different than the Santa Monica ordinance. Could we explain that so we get some clarity?
What we're recommending is that we have clarity as to what it is that we want the Office of Economic Review to look at. You know, it could be the draft ordinance itself, but certainly the intent of the author would also suffice. We just don't want to create a situation where we ask, where we analyze something and are not clear as to what the actual intent is. So if we want the office to look at the Santa Monica ordinance as a, as sort of a template, we will be happy to do that as long as that's clearly what the intent is by the author of the motion.
But the issue on the Santa Monica that deals with non-hotels, how do we rectify that?
Councilmember Madeline Rackley with the CAO. There are two issues in the Santa Monica ordinance, two parameters that apply, and that is, it applies to all businesses in two particular target areas in Santa Monica, two locations, and to businesses that have gross receipts of more than a certain amount of money in the year 2000. It did not specifically mention hotels, so that's why it's different. It doesn't mention hotels, and it does mention gross receipts in two specific business areas in the city of Santa Monica.
Okay. Let me ask the city attorney, would you clarify whether there is a need of an ordinance, a right in ordinance, to provide the information from the, to the CAO? Or do you work off of their report to create the ordinance?
We would, to write the ordinance, we would need clear instruction from the city council, and we would also need to have some findings made. They can be either economic findings that are based on a CAO report, or they can be social policy concerns or goals of the city, policymakers like the city council.
Okay.
So we can do either. We just would need instruction to ask us to draft, and we would draft.
And Miguel, what would be the best source of getting the information so that you know what to study?
Are you asking me?
Miguel. Well, if the intent is to reach the same outcome as a Santa Monica ordinance but to apply it to hotels, then getting clarity from your council would be helpful. And then, we could then use that as a vehicle to have the analysis done. I just want to be clear as to what it is that we're having studied so that we're not coming back with a report that doesn't satisfy what the intent is.
Was that clarity given at the committee?
At the committee, the direction was to request the city attorney to prepare an ordinance and to ask the CAO Office of Economic Analysis to identify funding sources to analyze that ordinance.
But did you get at the committee the clarity as to what you're going to analyze?
It would have been in the ordinance, so whatever was specified in the ordinance would be studied. The two things that we know so far to be included in a potential ordinance would be the right of recall having to do with notifying former employees and giving them 10 days to respond, and the idea that it would apply to hotels with a certain number of rooms, more than 50. Those are the two things that we, the two parameters that we have right now.
Okay, is the recall similar to what the city's implemented on its contract issues dealing with contracting within the city? Is that a similar link?
I don't know.
Let me ask the city attorney, we have an ordinance about dealing with employees that are under contract.
Are you referring to the hotel, I'm sorry, the grocery?
In the microphone, Madam City Attorney, we couldn't hear you.
Pardon? Okay, I'm sorry. We do have a grocery worker recall ordinance that's similar.
Would this be similar?
Yes.
Okay, and that wasn't studied economically?
Right, and so let me make a point, a couple points. First of all, the Santa Monica ordinance, even though it doesn't specifically call out hotels, because of the way the business threshold and the geographic areas are defined, there are, most of the businesses affected are hotels, so there is some similarity. But also, you may recall with regard to our LAX hotel ordinance, the council made some... made certain findings that were of a, a social benefit nature, and then included in the ordinance was a later request to do an economic study to assure that the impact of the ordinance, um, wasn't having a, a very negative impact on the hotels. So that could be a model for, uh, a current ordinance. If you want to do an economic study, we could go ahead and draft the ordinance if that's the council's desire, um, based on social policy issues, and including the ordinance, um, uh, requirement that the city conduct a study to, um, see how the ordinance is working when it's in effect.
Let me ask my final question to the CAO. What did we find out in your research, uh, economically from the city of Santa Monica?
Um, Councilmember, I did speak with one of the council members in the city of Santa Monica, and he reported to me that the city has not yet done an analysis of the impact of that ordinance on the city in Santa Monica. Um, he was also unaware that there had been any enforcement requirements of that ordinance.
And how long has that been?
It's been in effect about ten years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Committee Chair Hahn for six minutes.
Thank you, President LeBonge. Uh, colleagues, what we are deciding today is whether we instruct the City Attorney to begin drafting an ordinance for, that would encompass hotels, fifty rooms or above. And basically what it would say is that when a hotel closes, uh, for a major remodeling or renovation and lays off a significant number of their hotel workers, when they reopen, this, it's a very minimum standard. It basically says to notify the previously laid off workers by letter, give them an opportunity to be rehired when the hotel opens, and we're giving them a ten day window. So if they don't hear back from the worker within those ten days, uh, they can move on and, and look at hiring somebody else. It's a very minimum standard. This is not far reaching, uh, I don't believe it's oppressive, uh, but it really is about the, the stability of our workforce in Los Angeles, and it's really about this hospitality industry, uh, that I believe is such a key part of why people do come to Los Angeles and why people do stay at our hotels. Um, the issue that we're grappling with is the idea of every ordinance that, uh, we want to enact in the city of Los Angeles, we've decided we'd like to have a, an economic impact analysis of this ordinance. The problem in our limited resources, uh, the CAO is telling us they can't analyze it until the City Attorney drafts it. We can't have this, uh, economic impact, um, analysis until we have some language to actually look at in the ordinance about what it would be. Uh, it's similar to the Santa Monica ordinance, but it's, it's really going to be more specific just to hotels, it's not gonna include businesses. Uh, we're pretty specific about hotels over fifty rooms, and by the way, this, I believe, um, dovetails nicely with our, uh, marketing tourism district that we just created. We just created a district, um, where hotels will be, uh, getting some extra money to put into the marketing of Los Angeles so that more tourists actually do come to Los Angeles. So this, uh, will just affect those hotels, and again, very simply, uh, when you close for a major remodeling or renovation and you lay off a significant number of workers, uh, all we're asking is that when you open back up, just to be fair, give those workers a right to come back. Some of these workers, by the way, have worked at these hotels twenty and thirty years. All we're saying is, let's behave in a, in a way that gives these workers some dignity and respect by offering them, uh, to come back to the hotel where they've spent their life working. Ten days, a letter, a certified letter, uh, it's a very minimum standard that we're asking. So colleagues, what I'd like us to do today is instruct the City Attorney to draft this ordinance. Then, uh, when we have real language, we can have more analysis of this, we can analyze it, and you have another opportunity to clearly weigh in on this idea after we have the language that we can all look at. Uh, I think it's a positive direction, I think it speaks to really who Los Angeles is, it's, uh, really not out of character at all with some of the previous things we've done, uh, to protect workers here in the city of Los Angeles. So I ask for us to just, uh, direct the City Attorney to draft this ordinance so we have something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Corretts, for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember Hahn, for helping move this item through committee a few times and, and for making such, uh, strong arguments here today on this item. Um, first of all, just to be clear, this is only intended to apply to hotels, so when this, uh, ordinance is drafted, that should be very clear. Um, and we're not trying to enact an ordinance without research or analysis. We all know we're in a budget hole, and that the City Attorney is, is now not drafting ordinances without direction by council, and based on the current finances, I think that makes sense. Um, at the same time, the CAO has made clear they can't do analysis until there's an ordinance to research and, and analyze. So which comes first, the ordinance or the research? Or the chicken or the egg?
Ask Bill.
We have to ask Bill that question, yes, uh, since he supplies most of the eggs around here. Um, we're simply asking the City Attorney to draft an ordinance and the CAO to do the economic research. We're not enacting anything today, it still has to go through the regular process of committee hearings, public comment, and full council approval before the ordinance is enacted. Just a few weeks ago, this chamber is full of groups that are, that are sometimes at odds with each other, the labor community and the business community, and both sides were here to support the renovation of the Wilshire Grand Hotel. Everyone agreed that this project was well designed and that the labor details were well worked out in agreement. Now some of the, some of these same groups are here opposed to this proposal. The fact is that very few hotels that undergo renovations close completely. It's very tough economically to close the doors for months or even years to upgrade and renovate. Most hotels renovate floor by floor or area by area, keeping their doors open and their businesses open and keeping their staff employed. This ordinance, if approved, would apply only to a very small group of hotels, those with fifty rooms or more, um, that completely closed their doors, which is a very small percentage of the total. The only requirement is that the hotels send a certified letter to their employees letting them know that the hotel is reopening and that they can come back to work. The employee has ten days to comply, and if not, the employee doesn't have to be rehired. I don't think that's too burdensome, after all, the Wilshire Grand is willingly doing this. Please vote to direct the City Attorney to draft an ordinance and to direct the CAO to provide the economic analysis. And I ask for your support on this item, and I have one quick question for the City Attorney, which is, with the information that you have now, uh, could you defend this proposed ordinance?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Corretts, we could. Um, you've made enough findings here today about the social benefits of the ordinance that we can, uh, prepare and sign off on it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Zine of the Third District.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. A hotel needs employees to take care of the patrons. A restaurant needs waiters and cooks to service the people, so it's very logical. If they modify it, they change it, they remodel, they need employees, and if they got employees that are displaced, logically you'd want them to come back. I don't see a problem with this ordinance. The concern I have is the economic impact, and it talks about the CAO doesn't have the resources. Uh, how, how do we establish that issue to do the economic analysis? Because you're not gonna remodel a hotel, displace the employees, and then open it up and not have people serving your patrons, it's, defines logic. So it seems like a legitimate connection. If they don't respond in ten days, the letter goes out, okay. And I don't want to be overly oppressive on the business community, but at the same time, the business community needs employees to service their customers. So the, this situation where you want to farm it out for the economic analysis, what type of economic analysis are we talking about?
Last year, your, your body instructed us to, to start an Office of Economic Review, uh, which we have done. Uh, we recommended using outside economists to do the analysis on specific pieces of legislation, um, which we have selected. The, the final panel will be coming to the council, um, committee next week for final approval. Uh, and in our report, we also, uh, recommended that each time there is a directive to ask that, that office to conduct a specific review, that the funds be identified to do that. Um, there was an initial money provided for some review of, of particular issues that came out of Mr. Garcetti's, uh, funds, and so consistent with the instruction that was adopted by your council, should there be any further analysis done on a, a particular issue, including this one, there would have to be the corresponding, uh, dollars identified to do that research?
And they would, they would come from where? You said, I mean, we're not gonna take the reserve fund, where are we gonna get the dollars so it comes out, so we see the numbers?
Well, as I indicated, um, the, Mr. Garcetti identified his
Right.
...funds with, that are controlled by his district.
But, yeah, his district, but this is a citywide ordinance that would take.
Right, no, I think his intention was to have it applied to citywide analysis, not just specific to his district.
So the council president would supply the dollars?
Or they could be supplied by another council member's district funds, uh, who is interested in this particular amount.
Could we approach labor and have them help fund it? Have we thought of that?
I'm not particular where the funding source comes from, we just need to have a funding source.
Well, obviously, we have to have funds to get the analysis, but I, I think it's logical, I don't think it's illogical to do it. Uh, I think the window of ten days seems reasonable, but again, you're not gonna open up a hotel, remodel, whatever the case may be, without having employees. And if you've got good, dedicated employees, naturally you'd want to bring them back. You want to displace them. In that time, we talk about the Wilshire Grand, they tear that down, they build a new hotel, which may take two years, those employees are probably gonna go find another place to work, they're not gonna sit around and wait for two years to come back, but those that may want to come back to the new one, they should have first, like first right of refusal.
Well, very good, Mr. Zine, thank you very much. If you want to speak again, please push it.
No, I'm done, Mr. LeBonge, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, from the Great Seventh District, Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, I just want to, um, give you a little bit of historical perspective. When the Northridge earthquake hit, uh, the Sheridan Universal actually suffered severe damage, and many of their employees, uh, were laid off. Uh, a huge chunk, I think it was something like forty percent. And, um, and, obviously, not many of them live in Universal City, they live in the city of Los Angeles. So, we, we were able to negotiate over a period of months and months and months with the Sheridan to protect those jobs. It so happened that many of the employees, the vast majority of them in fact, uh, live in my district. And so, we were able to negotiate with the Sheridan Universal to, uh, hire them back, and, and they did. Uh, most of them got their jobs back. Um, that was during a disaster. Uh, when, when you're gonna construct something, you are, excuse me, Mr. Chair? Yes, sir? Can I ask for quiet?
All right, ladies, uh, mostly, uh, men, not ladies, but most of the guys are talking too loud here. Step back, I want clearance by the fire marshals and the sergeants, and calm it down.
Um, anyway, my, this is, this is a controlled situation, where you know that you're gonna have, uh, impact, and, and, and then you, you promote a project to rehabilitate a building, perhaps, and, and you promote it on the basis of creating jobs, creating future jobs. So it, it would be ironic for this, somebody to champion a cause of creating jobs by eliminating other jobs. That just doesn't make any sense. Uh, if we haven't learned anything in this economy, it's that, uh, continuity of employment is critical. It's critical to our economy, it's critical to the well-being of our communities. I think this, this proposal is mild, and, and it is, it is, it should be standard policy in America, that when somebody eliminates a job temporarily because of a construction project, they give them their job back. What is so wrong with that?
Right.
What is wrong with that? And so, so I absolutely, uh, staunchly support this, this measure, want to thank Mr. Corretts and Ms. Hahn for, for giving us this opportunity. Um, the hotel industry in Los Angeles is going through some tough times, uh, but let's not, let's not blind ourselves to the fact that tough times means tough times for all the people that work in the hotel industry, especially the line staff, who are least capable of recovering should they slip into an unemployment situation. Uh, so, uh, we should strongly urge passage of this and, uh, and work with our hotel industry to ensure that they are strong so that they can continue to pay those benefits. But if they're gonna come to us asking us for special, uh, credits, to, to special opportunities to build, uh, their hotels better and to expand them, particularly on the notion of creating jobs, then they have to meet us halfway to guarantee that those people who are currently employed will not be negatively impacted by losing their jobs permanently.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alakon. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise in, in strong support of this today, and, and thank you, Ms. Hahn and Mr. Corretts, for the work. You know, we have trade, technology, and tourism, the three main industries, the three Ts of our economy here in Los Angeles. And we have shown ourselves to be a friend of the tourism industry time and time again. This is a social contract between the elected representatives of the city who say to the business community, whether it's the need for transit occupancy tax to get new hotels built, and those that are older that sometimes fight that, were actually built on that or assistance from CRA monies, uh, whether it's looking at keeping the door open to exploring what happens at the convention center and being able to redo that to help the hotel industry even further, whether it's the money that we pay into promotion of our hotel and visitors', uh, industry by making sure people come to Los Angeles, and it has been one of the bright spots, well, not bright, but brighter spots in the, in local economy of late, when many other places have seen downturns, we're seeing transit occupancy tax and other things creep up. The idea that somehow keeping those best skilled, senior workers on the job would somehow hurt the bottom line of hotels seems to go against logic. Those are the people, we know how much it costs to train somebody new, we know how tough it is once you train them to figure out whether they're the best around, but those who have been there, who are the folks who can teach, um, the folks who can immediately jump into situations that are very complicated in big hotels, and serve our guests with the best experience that we want them to have when they visit the city of angels, seems to be the best thing for our industry to move forward. And as a social contract, and we have said we would step up with taxpayer money to make sure that hotels are strong, we are making sure that the hotels respect the workers that make those hotels strong as well. And we know that the workers who do that, um, by having less turnover, by having greater skills, by having lower training costs, can help the hotel's bottom line as well as making sure they help the local economy. When people are displaced, it is very expensive, and who picks up the bill? We all do. We pick that up with having to retrain people to go into new industries, to pay unemployment, to have emergency room visits when the healthcare runs out. That's a cost that we all shoulder. So somehow, if we didn't have this in place and people could be replaced very quickly, we'd say, oh, it's no cost, it actually helps us. That's not the case. It is a burden on all of us, and so I stand very strongly, and I'm very excited that Ms. Hahn is looking at the Office of Economic Analysis, because for anybody who's a doubter, we have the ability, it's nice, we've sometimes had people on one side of an issue who would be traditionally more conservative, and people on another side who would traditionally be more liberal, both say, hey, let's use this impartial team of economists who can tell us what the bottom line is, so that when we vote on this, we know that. But it is my strong suspicion, being very familiar with this industry, that this will be something that will help the hotels as well as help our communities and our families who work in those hotels. Thank you to the hotels for being a bright spot in our economy, we want to continue to help you, and thank you to the workers who make sure that our economy and those hotels are strong as well. Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosedal.
Uh, there are ten cards out there, should we give them one minute apiece to speak?
All right, we gotta open up, well, we had a public hearing in committee, but I, as President of the Council, Presiding Officer if you will, will entertain a motion to open up public comment, but I will rule on one minute.
Okay, and then I want to speak afterwards, thank you.
All right. Uh, with the vote. Without objection, so ordered. Public comment. Stuart Waldman, from VICA.
You mean Stuart Waldman?
Yeah, I apologize, Stuart, your prettiness not as good as mine.
Um...
This is Tom Labonge, go ahead.
Uh, good morning, I'm Stuart Waldman, I'm President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing over three hundred and sixty businesses and industry leaders that have created... businesses and industry leaders that have created over 100,000 jobs in the city of Los Angeles and its surrounding areas. On behalf of VICA and its membership, I wish to express strong opposition to the proposed hotel worker recall ordinance. While I applaud the council for making excellent strides over the past year towards a more welcoming environment for the business community, the proposed hotel worker recall ordinance directly interferes with such optimistic progress. It places an unjust mandate upon our city's hotel industry. Such burdensome restrictions would cripple the tourism transactions, hindering city development, and deterring investment in the city. Furthermore, it would discourage the necessary renovations for many of the city's hotels to compete in a globalized economy by forcing them into an immediate competitive disadvantage with neighboring attractive communities such as Beverly Hills.
Thank you very much, Stuart Waldman. Appreciate that. Robert Altman, come on up, Robert, from the Hotel Association.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. Robert Amano, executive director of Hotel Association of Los Angeles. While I appreciate your comments today on behalf of the hotels, there's just one thing I need to say, in that in drafting this ordinance or all through this process, never did the association or its hotel members get called in to discuss this. Now, that was only after the committee meeting last week that we were ever approached on a meeting, okay? Unfortunately, with 36 hours or so to convene and be at the table and speaking productively, we were unable to attend that meeting. So at that point, we were all for discussion, and we are here to discuss and sit at the table. So I'll keep that brief, my comments there.
Thank you very much, Carol Schatz.
Council members, this is a proposed ordinance in search of a problem. There was one problem, the Bel Air Hotel. That was it. There are no other hotels in question here, because once the issue happened with the Bel Air Hotel, the new provisions were added to the collective bargaining agreements of every hotel that had a contract with Local 11. So we don't have an issue. There is no issue. And yet, to draft an ordinance, and I have been here for 20 and a half years, I've never seen an ordinance drafted that isn't passed in some way, shape, or form. You're going to draft an ordinance that has, will have huge presidential impact, because we believe that that is questionable, questionably, questionable legal, legally, I'm sorry, I'm not getting that right. It is legally questionable to have an ordinance that just targets hotels. Therefore, other industries would be brought in and swept into this non-problem issue, and you are going to create a very broad precedent, and it is not appropriate. And if I have, may I have 30 seconds more?
25.
Four hotels have come into our office on the strength of the stadium in downtown Los Angeles, interested in investing. If they hear about this, and the companion motion that council member Hahn also brought up in November, I think it will give them great pause. It can have a chilling effect, because they, why would they invest in a place where they are crippled in terms of making their own business decisions? This does have an impact. It's not a simple 1-2-3. And that's why we recommended in November that you do an economic analysis before you draft an ordinance.
Thank you.
We know enough from the authors to know that you can get an economic analysis done before.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schatz. James Elmandorf.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is James Elmandorf, from the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. I strongly urge your support to move forward and ask the city attorney to draft this ordinance today. As the council member Hahn and Carras and others described, this is a reasonable and straightforward ordinance that will address a very serious problem, which is that when hotel workers are laid off, they are out of work, it costs the city money, and it hurts their ability to pay for their basic bills and to be able to raise their families. We need to have this ordinance urgently, because renovations are rising as the economy recovers. Hotels are seeing the opportunity to grow, and it's fantastic, and we want to continue to encourage that. We just want to make sure that the workers who have been there, serving customers for many, in some cases, 25, 30 years, have the opportunity to come back if they so choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tom Welsh.
Good morning, Tom Welsh, Hotel Workers Union. We strongly urge your support for this ordinance. This simple law would prevent companies like Dorchester, the operator of the Bel Air Hotel, from the human tragedy, from suddenly firing their entire workforce. That was wrong, and so, we urge your support. Behind me are the men and women who took the Bel Air Hotel from a four-star mobile rating to a five-star mobile rating. They made the Bel Air Hotel, and I'll see the rest of my time so that I can introduce themselves.
Good morning, a member from the council. My name is Irma Zabala. I worked for 20 years in the Hotel Bel Air. I gave my best years, you know.
Just name and department.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Xenia Hernandez. I worked in the Hotel Bel Air for two years.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Escobar, and I'm working for Hotel Bel Air for 23 years, in housekeeping.
Take another 25 seconds.
Good morning, my name is Maria Gomez. I've worked for Hotel Bel Air for 10 years.
Good morning, my name is Alfonso Zambrano. I worked in the Bel Air Hotel for 15 and a half years.
My name is Jose Garcia, and I worked for seven years.
Good morning, my name is Jose Bajorcas. I worked for four years in the hotel.
Good morning, my name is Jose Antonio Martinez. I worked for 20 years in Hotel Bel Air.
Thank you all. And Tom, I think that runs your time, but we want to thank all the workers to come. There's others that are going to call right here for the comment. So after this gentleman.
Good morning, my name is Carlos Pabon. I'm working there for six years. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Now, I'm going to call on Irma Zivak. Thank you, Irma. You've got a full minute.
Good morning, Mr. Councilmembers. My name is Irma Zabala, and I've worked for 20 years in the Hotel Bel Air. I gave my best years, you know, from my life, dedicated for that job. And unfortunately, right now, I not have a job. I look for a job, you know, but since the hotel closed, it's kind of difficult, my life, you know, with my family, to grow my kids. So, I would like to ask you to please support the right of recall for the workers from the hotel. Thank you very much.
And Van Iceberry of Fulger.
Thank you, LeBonge. I'm glad you have re-elected. Wanted to say that this is a way in for the CRA to spend more money. And it says here in the agenda, if people go online, you can see it says, the CIO has no idea what this is going to, how this is going to impact the general fund. You people are concerned about the budget, I'm sure. This is going to, I don't know what's going to do to this, but I think that the, there's plenty of rich people out there that can take care of the hotels, and we don't need to be subsidizing them again, the middle class and the poor, to subsidize these motels. I think this is a, this is a no-brainer here, obviously, that, you know, all they have to do is make the motels more attractive. I'm sure you'll get plenty of business, and people will come here if you would make the city attractive, instead of taking the money and putting it somewhere else. I don't know, but.
Very much. This is a one-minute. You betcha. Thank you. Moon Sung Suk.
Good morning, council members. My name is Moon Sung Suk, a principal at a firm called Sage Strategies. I'm here as, most recently, a chief negotiator representing Wilshire Grand Hotel, negotiating the closure agreement with the hotel workers who work at Wilshire Grand, and also a perspective, personal perspective, as a former hotel worker myself. Just, I'm here to say that basically, recall rights for hotel employees makes a good business sense. At Wilshire Grand Hotel, the average year of service for the employee was about 16 years. And that's the 16 years of real time and money that was invested in making sure that the hotel had the employees that had the knowledge base and the experience to make the hotel experience for their guests the best one that they could get. Trying to, and while we were negotiating and discussing the redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel, there was a real discussion about the possibility of trying to reopen the Wilshire Grand Hotel with our brand-new employees. And a lot of this difficult discussion took place, but the final analysis was that that's impossible, that you can't take, you can't open up a brand-new hotel without the employees that worked in the hotels before.
Thank you for your comment on that. Appreciate that. Amanda Escobar. Amanda Escobar.
Mi nombre es Amanda Escobar, y soy migrante de El Salvador.
Escobar, and I'm an immigrant from El Salvador.
Ex-re-camarera del Hotel Bel Air.
Previous room cleaner at the Hotel Bel Air. Primeramente, agradezco la oportunidad de dirigirme hacia ustedes esta mañana. First of all, I thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to speak to you this morning. Sobre la ley de retención que propone para la ciudad de Los Ángeles. About this proposed recall of employees through this ordinance. Como previamente dije, trabajé en el Hotel Bel Air por 23 años. As I previously stated, I worked for the Hotel Bel Air for the last 23 years. Este es un lugar super lujo, con clientela muy distinguida. This is a very luxurious place with very distinguished guests. En mi tiempo atendía clientes famosos como Lauren Bacall. During my time of working there, I would serve very famous clientele such as Laura Bacall. Tom Cruise. Tom Cruise. Robert De Niro. Robert De Niro. Matt Damon. Matt Damon. Elizabeth Taylor. And Michael Jackson. Taylor and Michael Jackson. Yo en mi trabajo me sentía muy profesional. In my work and servicing the guests, I would do it in a very professional manner. Me encantaba mi trabajo. And I loved my job. Por estas razones, yo y el resto de mis compañeros estamos aquí esta mañana. For this and other reasons, myself and the rest of my coworkers were here this morning. Aplaudiendo sus esfuerzos y apoyando la ley de retención. Applauding your efforts, and we're in great support of this recall ordinance. Ningún trabajador de hotel en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. No hotel worker in the city of Los Angeles. Debería pasar lo que nosotros hemos pasado en estos dos largos años. Should go through what we've gone through in these last long, two long years. Con su visión y liderazgo. With your vision and leadership. Harán que la ciudad de Los Ángeles sea el modelo para el resto de la nación. You're going to make the city of Los Angeles the leader and the model for the rest of the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Escobar. That completes the public comment. At this time, I call on Mr. Rosedal, who has 2 minutes 26 seconds left.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I did want to hear everybody speak first, before I make my comments. And I must say, I was in the committee meeting that Ms. Hahn so ably chaired and voted in favor of what we are planning, and hopefully, will do today. The Bel Air Hotel is one of the most successful hotels in the nation. I know. I know the folks who go there and everything else about that hotel. And when each one of those folks came before the committee, as they did just here, it was compelling enough to know that those who love that place, who work there, that put the best part of their life there, should be respected to the degree that they're the first ones back if they want to come back. It's a no-brainer that we should be doing that. At the committee meeting, I made it clear, I'd like to talk to the owner of the Bel Air Hotel. Well, they couldn't set it up. He's shuttling between this, that, and the other in the world, which is great, 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 great. But the bottom line is, the workers are as integral a part of that hotel as the investors are. That hotel is going to continue to thrive, and they should have the right to come back. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosedal. Mr. Rosedal, thank you again for suggesting the quick one-minute public comment. I think we've got some great public comment. Now we continue to the debate. Let me call on Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just have one question, that is on the economic analysis. Some of my questions regarding the legal issues were answered, but on the economic analysis, at what point, Mr. Santana, does your office say, we can do the economic analysis for a proposed new ordinance in-house, or we have to go and hire outside consultants, and we need additional revenue, I mean, additional funding to do that? I'm not quite sure, because we voted a lot of things here. And so, I'm surprised, sometimes we say, we need economic analysis, and you need to go and find funding to do it. And so, this doesn't, I'm trying to figure out, what criteria do you use, or when do you determine that?
When this office was created, it was specifically stated that the work would be done through outside economists to bring it a level of objectivity, so that there was no sense that somehow the city was skewing the information one way or the other. And so, the directive was to bring together a panel of economists that we would utilize depending on what the specific subject matters are. So, among the panelists that will be before your council later this month, there are folks who specialize specifically in the tourism industry, so we would want to select among those. But that was, the expectation that it would be done by outside economists was established at the onset when this office was created.
Do we have funding for that office?
No. And what we stated, and what you approved, was that each time there would be a directive to do an analysis, that there would be money identified and put aside for that purpose. And so, it was a way of ensuring that the office was created. I mean, office is too formal a word. I mean, it's not, it's not like an office. It's, you know, my staff member and one other that are assigned to coordinating with the economists. But because it is one-time money, because the assignment is one-time, there would be one-time source of funding. And as I mentioned from the onset, the council president identified money from his discretionary dollars for specific studies.
Now, I mean, do you anticipate, then, that that would slow down our ability to enact legislation, because we're not going to have money to do these studies? Or do you, in your office, have the capacity to do some of this?
We don't have the capacity. That was, that was.
Legislation like this, for example, I mean, how much work, do we have to go get an expert in this area? Or do you, I mean, do you have some staff members who could do this type of analysis?
No, we actually have a panel of experts that we would tap into, and so.
So you don't have the capacity in the CIO to do this type of economic analysis to look at this legislation?
No, we do not.
I don't know. It's concerning, you know, because a lot of these things, it just, it's what we do every day. That's the, aside from constituent services, a bed and brother of drafting legislation as a legislative body, and to do this type of economic analysis, I'm not quite sure it requires experts. I mean, at what level, when you see something coming before council, do you think, no, this is going to require experts, or we can do it in-house?
Well, it's very rare that we do anything outside of my office, but this particular program was designed with outside economists in mind. When you approved it, you directed us to use outside economists. And so, the idea was to have people who specialize in looking at the economic impact of a piece of legislation, or an idea, or an ordinance, that was done from someone who has really no opinion on, you know, one way or the other. And specifically, it was at the request of the Chamber of Commerce, who was really the ones who led the effort and asked that the city adopt this ordinance.
I got it. And what type of information do we need to gather here to do this analysis? For this legislation?
My, you know, I'm not an economist, but my sense would be that they would want to do a review of those hotels that have engaged in the kind of remodeling that is being contemplated here over a period of time, establish, you know, what the experience has been, look at the, you know, the, how many hotels we're talking about, and do a projection out of what exactly that would look like.
Got it.
And then talk about the ripple effect, both on the, on both sides of the issue. One is, you know, what is the impact of having an unemployed population as a result of not hiring them, adding to the unemployment rolls of the city, etc.
And let me close with this. You're going to get a proposed ordinance. It's going to say at the bottom fiscal impact, right? If it has some fiscal impact, then I'm assuming you and your office are going to make the decision, no, we could do this in-house, or we need to get the outside panel of experts. Who will make that decision, in the CIO's office? Or who will make that decision? Is it you? Is it you?
No, well, I won't...
Is it us? Is it the legislation saying, "Hey, we don't need to do the economic analysis with the panel of experts"? Who makes, who will make that decision?
The way that the directive that was established was that the council would determine what is reviewed by this office. It's, I don't, I personally and the CIO's office doesn't have the authority to make that determination. The council makes that determination. If, if it's interested in using this tool that you created, then you establish and direct us to do that.
Got it. And finally, Mr. Weezer. One last question. Thank you, Mr. President. Finally, on this item, when will we get the economic analysis before it comes back to council? If it should go forward today?
I think today we receive clarity from the author and the rest of the council as to this scope in which you're looking for. And so our report says that we wouldn't do the analysis until after the ordinance. I think we have enough information that we could start that analysis now and try to, the, the panel of economists will be before you in the next 10 days, so that, you know, we're talking about getting that, you know, done fairly quickly. And we will, we will make sure when we select an economist, they understand that this, the expectation is that this is done as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer and Santana. Thank you. Mr. Kocorian of the Second District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Santana, as I understand it, the report back will be an economic analysis, but will one component of that also be the Nexus analysis? Or will that be part of the city attorney's reporting back when they draft the ordinance?
I understand that will be part of the city attorney's.
Okay. So before this body votes on an actual ordinance, we will have had the full benefit of the financial analysis report prepared by independent analysis and the opinion of the city attorney that there's legal justification because of a finding of Nexus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So colleagues, for many years, the business community came to us and said we should have a greater degree of financial analysis of the legislation that we enact that impacts the business community. And with some justification, the business community identified instances in which this body has acted, sometimes in a way that didn't, wasn't with the full benefit of that kind of analysis. And we saw the benefit of that. We enacted this proposal for financial analysis, and President Garcetti stepped up and at personal sacrifice arranged for some funding so that we could do this. So this, to me, we heard arguments today from workers, we heard arguments from the business community, all of which involved the economic impact of either enacting or not enacting this ordinance. Well, I don't run hotels. I don't think anyone here runs hotels. So the economic analysis that is a part of this proposal is exactly what we should be doing in order to make good policy. Now, our CIO has told us that in order to prepare that kind of an economic analysis with any degree of accuracy, with any degree of sophistication, you have to actually have words on paper, a proposed ordinance, so that you know what it is that we're assessing the impact of. Now, it was said that we, you know, once we draft an ordinance, we never say no. Well, I don't know what's happened in the previous years, but now we are creating a regime, I hope, here, where when we enact ordinances, we are looking at the economic analysis. We are looking at the legal justification for it. And I think in order to do that, we should move forward with this proposal. And I applaud Ms. Hahn and Mr. Kuretz for this tying the two together, bringing a draft ordinance back to us so that we can look at, look at that ordinance with the full benefit of economic analysis and Nexus analysis. To me, that's exactly how we should be making policy here, and I think it makes every deal of, every bit of good sense to do exactly that. So I stand in strong support.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me, Mr. Kuretz, let me just add, make sure I'm clear. When you had your comments, you said that our issues today was to move forward and moving forward on the ordinance draft and also move forward on the economic analysis, but we weren't approving the ordinance today. With that in mind, if I can do two friendly amendments and maybe we can move forward on this, I'm only friendly to Mr. Kuretz. Would amend the report to basically say that the city attorney is directed to include all concerned parties in the drafting of the ordinance? That secondly, we direct the CIO to locate the funding to complete the study simultaneously with the drafting of the ordinance, so that we get both of them at the same time.
Second?
Those are my intentions anyway, so I'd be happy to have that be a friendly.
And I'd move that. Move this issue.
All right. So thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for a first time.
If he's ready to move, if we're already, is there anybody?
Well, he can't move it after he made those suggestions. You could say move it if you want.
Move it.
All right. There's a motion before to move this. There's three members, two members are as amendment. No objection, Ms. Hahn, no objection, Mr. Kocorian. Then we have the motion with the two amendments in front of us now. There's still people on the queue, but we have a motion to move, so let's open the roll to suspend and move this.
What you're proposing.
Ms. Perry, if you could stand and articulate that.
Move it.
I move.
Call the question.
I'll call the question. Thank you very much. All right, the question has been called. Is there any objection to the question being called?
No.
All right, there's one objection. Let's open the roll on the objection. Okay, it takes 10 votes to end 10-vote item. All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, two votes.
Twelve eyes. That's completed our discussion. Now we have the matter in front of us. Correct, Mr. City Attorney? As amendment, as amended, we have the matter in front of us. Shall we open the roll on the matter? Point of order.
The point of order is, is the scope of what we are voting on encompassing a financial analysis that will also include potential impacts on future investment decisions by hotel, potential hotel owners in moving into downtown? Will that be part of what we are voting on?
I'll listen to Mr. Parks.
I think that the financial analysis on the other ordinance that deals with expanding the worker retention, that would be appropriate. On this one, we're talking about refurbishment and reconstruction of existing hotels, and I think that that's the one that...
Okay, so that's the point of order.
It's a more narrow economic analysis.
Right. The debate has been ended.
The broader economic analysis...
Mr. Parks, we got that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good. So basically, well, he, his point of order was more of a question as opposed to point of order. Hmm, got it. Well, I'm going to ask the clerk to call that right now, so I did.
Point of order, I don't know if what we're voting on is the scope of this outside consultant's work on the economic analysis of this ordinance. That is not what we're voting on. We are not voting...
There's two amendments to this here.
We're not voting on their scope of work.
Very well, Ms. Hahn.
We're voting on this economic analysis.
I'm going to have the clerk, Ms. Hahn.
At the same time, the draft...
Ms. Janice Hahn, I'm going to have the clerk announce what's before us, please.
What's before you is the Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee report, which requests the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance, and also direct the CIO to work with the council to identify funding, as amended by Mr. Parks, to include the city attorney, to include all concerned parties in the drafting of the ordinance, and for the CIO to locate funding for the study simultaneously with the drafting of the ordinance.
Wait, does everybody understand that? Everybody understands that? Mr. Kocorian, are you satisfied with your point?
Enough.
Enough, good. So that's good enough for me, if we're satisfied. So now we have before us, repeat it again for the record, Madam Clerk.
What's before you is the Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee report to request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance, and to direct the CIO to work with the council to identify funding sources for economic analysis, and as amended by Mr. Parks, to include for the city attorney to include all concerned parties in the drafting of the ordinance, and for the CIO to locate funding for the study simultaneously with the drafting of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Point of order, Ms. Hahn.
Can I have the city attorney?
It's not a point of order. The debate is complete, Ms. Hahn.
All right. Well, there is a concern that, and while we want everybody at the table helping us, and by the way, I've asked for that, and some of them have refused to come to the table, the city attorney doesn't feel that they should be directed to use outside people to draft this ordinance. So there's a concern.
All right, fine. That's very good there. But what we have before us is what the clerk just said, and I'm going to rule we're going to vote on it right now. Okay? So here we have this item before us. So we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. Move forward on this one. Thank you very much, everybody. Everybody have any questions, ask Jerry Miller. Next item.
Next item is item number 19, called special by Mr. Alicon.
All right, Mr. Alicon, item 19.
Take what I can get. Council members, this is just a, I just wanted to make a brief, brief comments about item 19. As you know, I introduced a motion with Ms. Hahn's second to have us take a look at the impacts of the Japanese disasters on Los Angeles' economic well-being. The Jobs and Business Development Committee, as well as the Trade and Commerce and Tourism Committee, met. We had a hearing on this at the port. I also conducted a hearing on this matter here in City Hall. And I first want to thank the Port of Los Angeles, World Airports, as well, Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation and USC, LA Inc., all of whom are, are engaged in just this subject. We hope to produce a report on this. It is much too soon to fully understand the devastation as it might have impacted Los Angeles in an economic way, but we can say this. We know that 305,000 visitors came from Japan last year, spending $270 million. We know that tourism is dropping off as a result of this. And so as, using that example, we are hopeful to develop strategies to quickly build back up the trade from Japan and also replace the, the tourism, I should say, with, with other opportunities. And so the, all of these departments and the organizations I've mentioned are engaged in preparing a report that we hope will give us, shed some light on what we need to do to restore any negative impacts, excuse me, to restore our economy in the light of any negative impacts that have affected Los Angeles. We anticipate that the, traditionally, the impacts are severe at first, but, but over time, within a, within a couple of years, you see tremendous recovery. We're hoping that that's the case in, with regard to the Japan disasters. So with that, we will be coming back with recommendations from the Jobs and Business Development Committee and the Tourism Committee within the next couple, several months, and we'll be working with those departments to ensure that we have as much information as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alicon. Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to thank both Mr. Alicon and Ms. Hahn for holding that hearing in the harbor, which I went to and was extremely compelling, especially the Consul General from Japan pointing out the seriousness of the earthquake. We also know yesterday there was a 6.5 earthquake again. So they've been dramatically impacted, and we just heard also that it has the Chernobyl effect. It is a number seven in terms of what the tragic results are of the atomic explosion there. And obviously, Japan has been a strong partner of ours and a friend of ours, and we actually have the largest Japanese-American community in the world. Here is right here. And so it was compelling for us to appreciate our relationship, and most important for us to reach out to the Japanese in every way, shape, or form to help them recover from such a triple tragedy that has just hit them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn is next.
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank Councilmember Alicon for agreeing to hold a joint committee between Tourism, Trade and Commerce, and the Jobs Committee to talk about how this triple tragedy, you know, the earthquake, the tsunami, and then the nuclear meltdown has affected Japan and how we also will be feeling some of the impacts. And we were very clear in our committee to really start out with a very sobering commitment from the United States to help in any way possible with the immediate recovery of Japan. And I believe it was Councilman Rosendahl who asked the Council General personally, "How's the United States doing?", and he said, "We certainly were at the top of the list of those countries who had responded with immediate help." And it was, and we started the committee on that note. But then we did move on to talk about the impacts to our tourism. As, as Richard mentioned, 305,000 Japanese visitors traveled to Los Angeles last year. You know, we've just started this Tourism and Marketing District in our, with our hotels so that, you know, the extra taxes they, they collect will go towards marketing Los Angeles so that their hotels can be filled, and yet this also could possibly impact that. We also spent some time, colleagues, talking with the, the port officials, with the men and women who work on the docks. There was already some concern from our dock workers that some of the cargo coming in from Japan could be tainted with radiation. We felt good that our port police officers talked about working, you know, with the Coast Guard and with other agencies to make sure that the screening, the radiation screening was going to be stepped up with cargo. I also, we also brought up the fire department's Station 48, the hazmat unit, and why we believe now more than ever that station should be fully funded 20, and staffed 24/7 already. Ninety percent of the calls of 48s is in response to some sort of a hazardous event at the Port of Los Angeles. This just brings in a whole nother serious issue that no one could, you know, could predict, and yet it has a devast, it could have a devastating impact into the health and safety of the men and women who work at the Port of Los Angeles. Another reason for 48s, we brought it up again, that we felt the Port of Los Angeles should be funding 48s, and we're going to follow up with that. This just gives us another reason to want that station to be fully staffed 24/7. We do not know the events, even with our, in our own area, let alone events that happen internationally that could impact the safety in terms of hazardous materials. So it was a very good hearing. We're going to get some reports back on, from our CIO, CLA, and talking more about this. We've asked the LA Economic Development Corporation to update their reports.
We're going to look forward to those reports.
And trade tourism soon. So it was a very good hearing. I really want to thank...
Thank you for your leadership on this, Ms. Hahn and Mr. Alicon. There's no other speakers on the queue. No other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. Next item, please.
Item number 20, called special by Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. And colleagues, we have before us, so we can take 20 and 21 together. Is that all right?
Very good. Take them both together. We do have cards.
Let's take up 20 and 21. I know we do have some cards, but I'd like to first ask the CIO to come forward to make a presentation today on what is before us with retiree healthcare. Then we can turn to public comment from folks that are here today and have some discussion on what is before us. But I think that both the public discussion, because I think there's some points that may address what the CIO is talking about, would be better informed, and our discussion would be better informed if we have that, that presentation, then I know the CIO is prepared. So I'll move that first.
So thank you. Public comment first on this item here, 2021.
Come forward to the presentation?
All right. Mr. CIO, presentation first. Mr. CAO, presentation first.
I brought it together, but I, did you have, was it PowerPoint on both, or is it just on?
No, it's, the PowerPoint's only on retiree healthcare benefits, the UFLAC MOU is self-explanatory.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we take up just the, that piece of the item, the retiree healthcare presentation?
Sure. Okay. In December of last year, we recommended that we start looking into this idea of freezing the retiree healthcare subsidy, in part to actions that was taken by the Fire and Police Pensions Board that increased our liability towards pensions and retiree healthcare by approximately fifty million dollars in a period of a very, a few months. What that action exposed is that this is a benefit that is becoming increasingly difficult for the city to afford. What you have before you is a recommendation that effective July first, we freeze the retiree healthcare benefit to the existing level, which is approximately a thousand one hundred dollars, which is enough to cover both the individual and their spouse or partner upon retirement. This is, if you go to the first slide in the PowerPoint that's before you, currently, retiree healthcare benefit is a benefit that current employees.
Make sure the hard copies are circulated for all members.
Do you have one?
I've got a voice on.
Okay. It is important, important, I thought, currently, active members, meaning all of us, currently do not contribute towards retiree healthcare. It's unlike pensions where, if you're a civilian, you're paying six percent of your income, which is, and will go up to seven percent July first, and then the sworn, a nine percent contribution is being made. There's currently no contribution being made towards retiree healthcare. There is a medical subsidy eligibility, the minimum age is fifty-five, at ten years of service. For Lasers, the average, the amount that exists today is one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Again, it's enough to cover an individual and their partner. That language, that subsidy amount is given to the Lasers Board to increase on an annual basis based on the authority that your council has given that board. The requirement is that they should always have enough of a subsidy to cover two-party at the Kaiser rate. On the sworn side, the Fire and Police Pension Board also have the authority to increase that rate on an annual basis. They're limited to seven percent increases on an annual basis. There is also a dental subsidy of thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Lasers administers retiree healthcare, whereas in the Police and Fire pensions are administered by the union plans. The, the graph on below shows you how many years of service you need to work in order to receive the maximum subsidy, or somewhere between ten years to twenty-five years. Most of our retirees are receiving the maximum subsidy. If you go to the next slide, it shows you how the increase in retiree healthcare has mirrored much of the same increase that we're experiencing among our current workforce that works for the city. Since 1999, we've seen a hundred and thirty-four percent increase in retiree healthcare. And again, each subsidy is established by the respective pension boards. The following slide shows you, again, this is something that you've seen before when we did the Pensions 101, shows you the growth in our pensions costs, as well as our growth in retiree healthcare over the last ten years. It started in 2001, two, with a total one hundred and five million dollar contribution towards pensions, and fifty-seven point nine million dollar contribution towards retiree healthcare. And this fiscal year, our payment for pensions is five hundred and eighty-one million, and retiree healthcare is two hundred and twenty million. Based on actuarial analysis, we, we now know what the future looks like in both pensions and retiree healthcare. And by the year 2014, we're expecting it to, the pension contribution to exceed over a billion dollars, and the retiree healthcare to reach two hundred and fifty-two million dollars. So, the fundamental question that's before you today is, can, if we move to the next slide, are, can the current structure be changed, and if so, how? It's our belief that the current maximum subsidy, or what you've seen on the chart that shows each year how much it has increased, we believe that that amount is vested. In other words, employees today are entitled to the amount that we are currently providing retirees. And so, if you retire today, what you're entitled to receive is a thousand one hundred and ninety dollars per month if you're in Lasers, and a thousand and ninety-seven dollars if you're part of the Police and Fire Unions. What is not vested are the future increases. So, and, so what is projected to, the growth that is projected in the future, we believe, based on the City Attorney's advice, is that that piece is not vested. In other words, your council has the authority to make an administrative change to actually cap the benefit at the existing level. Moving on to the next slide. As a result of a directive that came from both this body and ERC, we were asked to issue two independent studies to look at what the savings would be if we were to actually freeze the benefit at the existing level. We looked at two options. One is to have a three-year freeze of that subsidy, and one is to permanently freeze that subsidy. And that direction was given for both Lasers and LA Fire Pension Systems and Police Systems. The target date that was established was July first, 2011. And so, the idea here is, if you have not retired as of July first, 2011, your subsidy would be frozen. What is important to point out is that we are not recommending any change to those people who are currently retired. Those individuals who are currently retired will continue to receive an increase on an annual basis, as permitted in the existing ordinance that you, that this council has adopted. But it would change for those who haven't retired as of July first. We looked at how other jurisdictions have changed retiree healthcare, and this is the principal model in which they've adopted it. They set a date. They say if you haven't retired by this date, you have one set of benefits, and if you've retired after that, you receive another set of benefits. The next slide shows us what the potential future looks like if we were to not subsidize this benefit. The red line represents the Laser's current growing subsidy over the next ten years, if you use the same growth pattern that we've seen in the previous last year. So, currently, a Laser member gets a thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. If you leave things, if you do not change anything, that subsidy is likely to increase by eighty-eight percent in the year 2020 at two, two thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. And for Police and, and Fire, again, the current subsidy is a thousand ninety-seven dollars, and is expected to increase by eighty-four percent at two, two thousand seventeen dollars. Now, the green line and the blue line below represent what would happen if, in fact, we were to freeze the benefit at the existing level. And what that, the sort of, what's in between the green and the red, and the yellow and the blue, is a potential savings that would be generated by the city by capping that Now, one of the things that we get credited for in a very significant way in, among investors and among bond rating agencies, is that we actually engage in good fiscal management by pre-funding our retiree healthcare benefits. Many of the jurisdictions, including the school district, are facing a very specific crisis currently because they do not engage in this activity. This has been a policy that has been adopted by the council twenty, over twenty years ago. What pre-funding means is that the actual valuations account for the total cost of the city's retiree healthcare obligations over time. In other words, what we pay for on an annual basis is not just what the cost of providing retiree healthcare benefits for current retirees. We're also paying for what is projected to be the cost for those of us who are working at the time that we retire. So, the dollar, the, you know, the, the contribution we make on an annual basis both pays for us currently, which is then invested by the two boards, and those dollars grow, and then it also helps cover some of the costs for those who are currently retired. And so, the dollar amount you will see is fairly significant, because we actually pre-fund it. And, and what this allows is, allows for level of predictability. It allows for assurances that that benefit is in existence at the time that you retire, regardless of what age you are. But it also means that it's very expensive. And we get credit for that by the bond rating agencies and by the investors, because it's not an, it's not a pending liability that we're just ignoring. We're actually dealing with it on an annual basis. Most other retirement systems are a pay-as-you-go system, which means they don't take into account the future growth of those who haven't retired, and they just pay for the, so they don't consider the long-term obligations. Again, the pre-funding leads to increased stability of the fund to cover the benefit costs over the long term. And implementation of a medical subsidy freeze as a result of pre-funding becomes immediately significant. Okay? And we'll show you how that grows. So, back to the analysis that we, that we hired a consultant to do, we asked him to look at two scenarios. One is freezing the, the benefit for three years during this difficult fiscal time, and another one is to permanently freeze it. So, that means that if you retire ten years from now, then the subsidy you will receive would be a value of a thousand one hundred dollars, approximately. And so, today, that dollar pays for enough to cover two individuals. Ten years from now, it may be only enough to cover one individual. That's basically what the freezing does. For three years, obviously, it, the, it's less of a significant impact. The first year, if we were to pursue the permanent scenario, the city would save a hundred and twelve million dollars immediately. That compounds year after year after year, and you could see how it grows, and this is accumulative savings of having taken that action. It provides a significant relief to our current fiscal crisis, as important, as well as the projected fiscal crisis that we've reported on in the last Financial Status Report. A three-year freeze, the savings is much more, less significant. It's the, for the first year, thirty-four million dollars and point five, and then it grows at a lesser rate. So, on a visual level, at the next slide, it really shows you how the savings are accumulated on an annual basis. The green line shows you what it would do, bar would show you what we would pay if we were to freeze the benefit permanently, and the red bar shows you what it exists today. And so, immediately, there is a, a savings that is generated should you take this action. Now, there's, as part of the directive that your council has given us, if we move to the next slide, it has been to try to negotiate with our bargaining units a contribution towards retiree healthcare. And we have been successful in reaching that negotiation with the coalition of unions on the civilian side, which represent nearly over sixty percent of the civilian workforce. The, the specific piece of their tenant agreement, which is currently being, going, pending ratification, will require all coalition members to make a four percent contribution, that means four percent of their salary, effective July first, to fund the retiree healthcare benefit. What they're buying is essentially a commitment from the city that we will continue to cover that growth year after year after year. And so, should you approve this policy that, that is before you today, we would recommend, obviously, that we commit to the pending MOU and provide an exemption for the coalition of unions who have agreed to make that contribution. The four percent contribution is the actual cost of that benefit. And so, it allows that benefit to be protected, that, and so, and it, what it does, it also does, it makes that two-party coverage now vested. We anticipate, on the general fund side, a contribution to be, it'd be the value of about twenty million dollars. When you add up the special funds as well, it's a contribution of over forty million dollars. And of course, this, this MOU, should it be ratified and approved by your council, would supersede this particular recommendation. So, what, before you are, are, you know, a recommendation that you direct the City Attorney to report back within thirty days with an ordinance to freeze the subsidy at, at the level that exists today, effective July first, and that we continue to negotiate with our bargaining units, as we have with the coalition, for a contribution toward this benefit if it's something that the workers feel is important to protect and to maintain. And we believe that doing this would provide a significant relief to our budget, not just for the years, the immediate years, but obviously, on an ongoing basis. These are structural changes to our budget. To the extent that we adopt these changes, they reduce the deficits that you've all seen in the various charts that we produce on a, on a permanent level. And that's what it means to make a structural change. Thank you.
Mr. Santana, thank you. On the queue, we have Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Santana. One of the things here, outside of the issues on the specifics and the negotiations that are going on with our unions right now, colleagues, is the importance, Mr. Rosendahl's spoken a lot about this, I've spoken a lot about this, I think everybody around here is, on controlling the soaring costs. What are the main factors that are the soaring costs in our city? Healthcare has been one of those in the last decade. I think the costs have tripled. The benefits that we have, I think, are important. People earn those benefits. There are good benefits that help keep a middle class here, that keep people out of emergency rooms, that have preventative care. But we also know that we have to figure out some way that we can right-size not only the workforce, but the benefits that we have for the workforce. So, this is, these are numbers we can't, no matter where you are politically, on what to do about it, this problem sits right here on our desks for us to solve. And I appreciate the work that the CAO has done on that, that number of members have done as well, to look at healthcare costs, and also, what some of the unions have done to step up and say, look, we want to be a part of that. We recognize, four years into recession, deepest recession that we faced, soaring healthcare costs at the same time, that's something we have to do to protect our own jobs and our own benefits. And we appreciate the work that will be done, and will continue to be done. Both at the negotiating table were appropriate, but also, today, is to point out what that issue is. Now, here's where things get a little bit more difficult. I think with our unions, traditionally, we have agreed to disagree on whose right it is to change the healthcare for our retirees and their spouses, and their partners, in some cases. Whether or not that is something that needs to be negotiated at the table, and it's a, it's a union right, or whether we, as management, have that unilateral right. Is, in other words, retiree healthcare a vested right today? What the City Attorney has told us strongly is that this is a management right. This is a management right to... This is a management right to cap the costs of, not necessarily take away, but it is not a vested right that no matter how expensive healthcare costs are, that the taxpayer has to foot that bill. Nobody wants to take away that right. Nobody wants to see firefighters and police officers who put their lives on the line, nor our civilian workers, some of whom work in extremely dangerous jobs and who work late hours and serve people, to take away their ability to work hard and to provide for themselves medically and for their spouses as well. Nevertheless, who has that right and where we're going to move is what is before us. And I hope that with each one of our unions, we will negotiate a solution, as we've been able to do in past years, to the budget deficit that we face that stops short of unilateral moves. But we also have to be clear that we have the right to do so, and for anybody listening who is part of any other unions, including the ones that are here, we retain that right. It is not vested, but we are willing to negotiate a vesting of that in exchange for other sacrifices being made. In fact, that's what the coalition of city unions has done at the table today, that we can say in good faith, we can look people in the eyes and say, "You will vest this retiree healthcare benefit in exchange for paying more into that." Now, police and fire already pay into their, in a way that civilians did, and already pay two percent into that benefit that they have. Whether that'll have to stay it to or not, this is not the place for negotiations. That takes place privately. And I know a number of people want to have updates on where the negotiations are with our police and our firefighters, and I think we should look at doing that sometime this next week. But we have a short window. Part of this is also looking at, what is our backup plan if we don't get the savings that we need at the negotiating table? What is our backup plan going to be? I'll tell you what the backup plan was for the last couple of years. It was furloughs and layoffs. We were challenged on furloughs. That was another area where we agreed to disagree with some of our unions. We said it is a management right. They said it isn't. We went to court, and we won in court. But nobody is happy about winning that in court because nobody wants to have furloughs. So, we sat down with our civilian unions, saying, "How can we end furloughs?" At least with the coalition of city unions, we have reached a tentative agreement that is out for approval right now as we speak. And it's important, not just for them, but for our sworn personnel, that we come to an accord on that. For our employees who, right now, are considering, "Which way do I vote on this?", you know, some saying, "No, we already vest. I don't agree with the city." Even if they were right, which I don't think they are, which our city attorney doesn't think they are, and which most presidents say is not the case, think about it. You could win on that, and we'd still have the deficit, and if you're general funded, you go right back to furloughs and more layoffs on the civilian side for sure. And it isn't beyond the realm of imagining that outside of the civilian sphere as well. So, leadership today is about making sure that we prepare ourselves for the Plan B for this year. Making sure that we have the ability to say, "Look, if we can't negotiate the equivalent amount of money at the table, we need to know what we do have the rights to do so that we don't get in the place that we did for the last two years. It wasn't good for our employees, and it wasn't good for us. Every couple of months, hey, it's a little bit more. Give us something else." You know, we caused confusion around here, caused confusion for our bond raters, caused confusion for the general public, like, "Well, what is the deficit? And once and for all, will you fix it?" Well, on the civilian side, we tried to peg that number, and we're engaged right now with our sworn side in picking that number and saying, "This is the one honest hundred percent number we think that you need to cover. We'll work with you to do that. We'll listen to your creative ideas. Just as we've done in past years, we will perhaps even pass things that we didn't think about that you bring to the table. But in the meantime, we have to have a responsibility July first to have a balanced budget." And really, that's what the retiree healthcare benefits piece is. So, today, we have the ability to hear, I think, from our sworn unions, who are here, I think, with some worries about this, where they believe probably, as our civilian employees have too, that it is not a management right, but our city attorney has been strong and clear on that, that it is, to be able to do something. We will only do this, or we'll move forward with this, if we can't get money in a different way. And I hold a lot of hope out for that. I think that we need to negotiate that in good face, looking people squarely in the eye, and make sure we do that at the table. But we also need to be clear to anybody else listening out there that we have this right. We will use this right, and even if we take a couple more days to get the feedback and to hear what the numbers are, crunch those numbers, what we have before us today is drafting the ordinance, drafting the ordinance. So, it's not a final nail in anybody's coffin. It is the drafting of the ordinance to come back to us and then decide whether or not we wanted to then impose that. And it gives us the time and the space. I mean, Mr. Santana, I think city attorney said it would be a matter of weeks to draft. This is not a simple ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's not even one week. It is multiple weeks where negotiations, discussions can happen. But if we need to look at doing that, maybe next Tuesday or Wednesday, we could continue. And I know Mr. Reyes wanted to get update on some of the negotiating with our sworn folks. I'm willing to do that, but I think we need to keep the momentum moving forward. We need to be very strong about what rights we have, and we need to be prepared, not because it's our preferred way of going forward, but because it is the responsible thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for those opening remarks on this issue. Next, on the cue, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Miguel, could you just give us a little background? How long has the CEO been working on the issue of healthcare reform in the city?
Well, I've, I've been working on it since I got here in 2009, but I, my colleagues have certainly been working at, on that prior to that.
What about this plan? How long has this been public?
It's been discussed at ERC, probably within, in a year now. It was specifically raised publicly in December as a result of the action taken by the police and fire pension board to change their actuarial assumptions and their rate of return assumptions.
So, December was, the actual pension board had to make some judgments as to this particular scenario?
Well, the two actions that they took resulted in an increase to the city for next year by almost fifty million dollars. And so, it really brought a level of urgency in trying to control these costs as quickly as possible, given the, the three-hundred-million-dollar deficit we were facing at the time that now is three fifty.
Okay. Could you explain to the public and to those here what unilateral implementation means as it relates to negotiation?
What it means is that the city ultimately has a right to implement specific elements to, to an agreement only after it's gone through a very specific process. And that's something that, you know, is a, should be considered sort of the last resort. The directive I've gotten has been to work as hard as we can to avoid that kind of directive. And, you know, also, in this item, is an agreement with UFLAC, where we were headed towards that path, and we mutually agreed to find an alternative way, and now we reached a resolution that's going to be, hopefully, be approved by your, by your council.
Is it fairly recent that the city attorney opinion that the subsidy that is currently being given is vested? Or when did we get that legal opinion?
I think it's been an opinion now for a couple decades.
Is it, so it's been around for a while?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when we talk about the vested right, basically, it's vested in the fact that they've already received it, but it's not vested on future contribution for active employees?
That is my understanding. If any more specific, I would, I would recommend the city attorney provide their, their analysis to you.
Okay. Do we have a city attorney?
There he is.
Okay. And then while the city attorney's coming, I think the plan that is before us today was much broader at one time.
Yes, it, it, we were also asked to consider freezing the benefit for existing retirees, which we believe is within your jurisdiction to do so. It is not what we are recommending at this time.
Okay. So, you believe that that is within our jurisdiction, but chose a narrower plan that you're bringing forth today?
That's correct.
Okay. City attorney, could you give us some idea of what this whole issue vested in, when, and how long we've been, in that particular situation, what does it mean to the city and our negotiation and our vote here today?
Well, the advice, Alan Manning, Assistant City Attorney, the advice that we've been given consistently is that the amount of the health subsidy that is, is, is being paid now, that that amount is vested, but that any future increases are not vested.
And that vesting is for, just as Mr. Santana said earlier, for retirees and active employees?
That is correct, yes.
All right. And then, Miguel, from looking at the budget, almost four-hundred-million-dollar shortfall for next year, what would be an alternative if this, if we did not go forward with this plan?
Well, I think, you know, the mayor's budget will come out in April, but it's something he's said publicly, so I feel comfortable stating it. I think he's, there will be a contemplating significant number of furloughs across the gourd, even beyond the number of furloughs that are being implemented today as a way of addressing the increase in our deficit, in part created by the increase in our pension and retiree healthcare costs.
Let me ask one technical question. Maybe the city attorney can address this. When we talk about personnel that are on the drop program, how would they be impacted by the July first date being that they are considered retired when they go into the plan versus the issue of them continuing on drop? How would they be impacted?
I think, I think that's really up to council to determine that and give us instructions as to how they would want sworn personnel who have entered drop but have not yet exited drop. There's nothing in the drop ordinance that really defines whether or not they're deemed to be retired or not. It's just that there are certain things that are taken into consideration. For example, their benefit is frozen, so to speak, their benefit is, can be determined, it is calculated, the amount of their subsidy is calculated. Whether or not they're deemed to be retired or not, for purposes of what the council might adopt here in a resolution, would really be up to council to define for us so we could draft it.
Okay. One thing, follow, one thing I'd like you to look into, because every report that we get on a worker's comp case that deals with an officer on drop, they have a specific statement that said he retired in 2004, he continued on drop to 2006. So, they're using that terminology as retired. And so, we need to make sure that there's clarity as to what is retired and whether, when they go and drop, are they by our administrative code or whatever deemed to have been retired or by the pension system? But that's, that's something that I see weekly on workers' comp reports.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, on that. Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, I think we're all in a, in a difficult position here. None of us want to be doing what we're looking at doing. And I think we haven't been looking at this kind of freeze on healthcare, not because we didn't have the ability to do it, but because it's something we never really wanted to get to. Unfortunately, we're, we're in a terrible situation financially, and our choices aren't good, whether we continue with massive furloughs and, and layoffs, or whether we deal with our pensions and healthcare. And obviously, we have to do something one way or another. I think that's a message we have to get across. We have to make some dramatic changes in, in how we deal with our healthcare and our pensions. And one way or another, we have to do that. We have to come up with some agreement to, to close this shortfall. I just have one, one clarifying question. On the general fund cumulative savings of these two proposals, exactly, how do we do the math? How do we get there? Scenario one, for three years, how do we get to thirty-four million and change? Scenario two, on the, the permanent proposal, how do we get to a hundred and twelve million and change per year?
I mean, I was surprised when I saw that number as well, when my staff first brought it to me. And the explanation is, is that because we are pre-funding, because we are essentially, our contribution on an annual basis is enough to cover a portion of the, the cost that we will incur when we retire, whether it's next year, whether it's twenty years from now, that allows the boards to invest, then the, the check that we write on an annual basis is a significant one. Because we're not, we're not just paying for the cost of those who are currently retired. We're paying for a portion of all of our costs that's done through an actuarial analysis. And it's, and it, the analysis is, what would that cost be at the time that we retire? And so, and we do it in advance. We don't just wait until, till that day you retire and make that contribution. So, that, when you, when we change that and say, as of July first, we are no longer increasing that, that benefit, we're freezing at an existing level, then the actuary readjusted the analysis and established, then our bill, our annual bill gets immediately reduced in a significant way. And so, the next chart really shows you how significant it is compared to what the bill is, is expected to be next fiscal year and the year after that. And so, if you limit it only to three years, if we say, "Okay, we're just going to freeze it for three years," then when they do the analysis, the impact is obviously significantly less. And, and again, the savings are generated as a result of the fact that we pre-fund this benefit, which is something, again, that we, we get significant recognition for, by both investors and bond rating agencies, because this is not just a looming liability out there like it is in many other jurisdictions.
I know my time is over, but if I just ask one, make one request that...
No problem.
I don't know that, that you'll be able to provide us with this immediately, but if you could give us some more detail on the calculations, just because intuitively, as you said in your first reaction, it's, it looks almost impossible that we would achieve such dramatic immediate gains. I'd like to get more detail on how exactly we came to those calculations.
And we, we would recommend that, should this come in form of an ordinance, that we invite the actuary, who actually, we attach the actuary to our, to our report, to come in and explain. This is the same actuary that we used that helped us with ERIP, that helped us with the pension reform that was approved by the voters. So, it's someone that we, we use significantly, and we trust their analysis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Congressman President. I just wanted to make a brief remark, and that is, just to get the update request, update on the negotiation, make that a formal request so that it's on the agenda and it's something we, I think we need to hear from.
And I would recommend, obviously, we have that discussion in closed session, and so that would need to be agenda-ized at a particulars at time.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, like I did with the other issue, I'd like to see the five cards first before I comment, please. Thank you.
Okay. If it's a request of Mr. Rosenthal, that asks for public comment, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh is left. John Walsh, again, two items together, two cards. Donna Pearlman, Van Nuys, California. Marion Folger, the pride of Birmingham High, is still in Van Nuys.
I was hoping to let Marion speak first, but...
No, you go ahead, please. I'll go first.
Anyway, anyway, I don't think this, oh, yeah. I believe that, that we should be adding DWP. I don't see anything that DWP, they, they have health costs too, and everything that... No, ratepayers have to pay for it. Well, as long as, every time that the DWP doesn't, doesn't have the employees pay for it, then they'll pass it on to the ratepayers, and the ratepayers are paying for it. So, I don't think this is right. I don't think that this is not enough time. I don't think that they're going to be getting people for July first, people won't have enough time to retire. So, I don't think this, that's right. And with all the overspending that the city council does, and I'd be curious to know what, how the city council, what happens with their healthcare, who's paying for their healthcare? And if they're not paying for the healthcare, then I think the city council should be paying for their own healthcare. But first of all, I just said that the DWP never had to make any concessions, and here they go after the same people all the time, and just so they can pretend like they're not going to get furloughs and layoffs, and they'll probably end up giving furloughs and layoffs, and then they'll probably ask again, "Well, that wasn't enough to, to offset this layoffs and furloughs. Now, we're going to have to go again and ask for more again next year, and more again this year, that next year." And so, that, that we go after against, against people like the Lasers that are on the fire on police. This is really wrong, what you're doing. Which, which is to do, is you have to give a certain amount, and the medicines, we can't include the medicines, you can't double the medicines and emergencies.
Two hundred percent.
Two hundred percent. This is ridiculous.
Thank you very much, Ms. Folger. Please, your turn.
I'm directly affected by all this BS that's taking place here with Santana, going and saying, "You guys better adopt this thing, or else you're going to be ridden." I think it's, we should be treated with respect and dignity, the, the, you, Mr., I mean, Eric, you sat down with me, and you know, you know very well that, well, anyway, the medicines went way up from five dollars to twenty dollars... went way up from $5,000 to $20, and that's outrageous. The Lasers have no control how much they're raising this thing. I think it's outrageous that they, that they go up so fast. And then $100 for emergency visit folk after July 1st from $50. This is for people who are going to be on retirement. People who are on retirement are going to be paying for this, and it's got to be weighed in. I mean, there's got to be some kind of controls here, the costs here, because they, the COLAs, you know, have to be, and the CPI has to be considered in all this. The healthcare, the DWP came here last December, got a sweetheart deal, Christmas present, get a pay raises, no concessions from their side, and when they ask the ratepayers to pay exorbitant costs, more money, so much more money, that they're not making any concessions on their end, only for on their raises, no healthcare increases on their end, to defray costs for the ratepayers and DWP. I think it's an outrage to keep coming to coalition, they said, this, no more negotiations for the next three years, hopefully that you're going to lay off of us, because we are exhausted, can't take it anymore. You need to go to DWP and get the money from them. It's their turn, they've been getting raises every single time, nothing from them. And you've got to put a cap on your debt, no more raising the cap on the debt like the elect congress, the Republicans are...
Thank you very much, Ms. Folger. Have a good afternoon. Now, down back in the John F. R. Chambers, Pat McCosker, United Firefighters of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. So this motion before you is really to strangle healthcare for firefighters, cops, police officers, paramedics, right now. And I heard Mr. Garcetti say just a little bit ago that this needs to be our backup plan, presumably a backup in case negotiations with us, which are scheduled to begin any day now on a contract, don't give you what you want. I would say to you that that's no way to treat us. Give us a chance to sit down and negotiate with you. This is pure leverage, this was rushed to the council without a committee hearing, without us having a chance to sit down and tell you what we think about this and what the other options might be. And it's no way to treat us, putting a strangle on our healthcare. You know, it's the moral equivalent of me right now, as we're about to start negotiating, saying we ought to have some job action. We ought to call in sick or do something like that. Well, we're not about to do that. That isn't the right way to negotiate with all of you, and we would ask you not to negotiate with us this way. It isn't fair. Give us a chance to address your situation. You know, we negotiated in the last contract with you, I understand the concerns about healthcare, that's why we were willing at that time to recommend to our members that we share that cost. But we wanted what the coalition just got, by the way, and that is the assurance that it wouldn't be ever increased, that we would get something in return for it, and there'd be protection for us. How about negotiating with us now? We're about to start again, treating us the way you just treated the coalition, by the way, because your paramedics, your police officers, your firefighters deserve better than this. Don't help your CIO put a stranglehold on our future healthcare right now, and then tell us at the point of a bayonet, if you want it back, give us what we demand.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Mr. Paul Weber, Los Angeles Police Protective League.
Mr. President, council members, this past MOU, the Los Angeles Police Protective League, was approached by the city, who had significant revenue issues, and rank-and-file police officers stepped up to the plate. We made significant sacrifices, had saved the city a tremendous amount of money. In addition, we agreed to talk about sustaining the pension system. We stepped up to the plate on that issue, too. We took the lead. There is no other group outside of fire and police that has come to this city and reached a new pension tier. We did it. We came to an agreement that's going to save this city over $2 billion over the next 30 years. At that time, we were called your labor friends. This is not the way to treat us. We deserve better than this. We have stepped up the plate consistently, rank-and-file police officers go in harm's way each and every day, your firefighters are serving the people that you represent. Negotiations, this is supposed to be day four of our negotiations. Instead, I am here dealing with this issue. If we work together, we can come to a resolution. But I have to agree with my brothers and the firefighters, this is not the way to treat, this is not good faith bargaining, and this demeans the city of Los Angeles, it demeans rank-and-file police officers and firefighters. And the $50 million you're told about retiree healthcare, the increase, that's amortized over 25 years, $220,000 annually. We can, we can change these numbers around any which way you want. This was rushed through, and the reality is, at the end of the day, 1,403 rank-and-file police officers and firefighters are eligible to retire right now. And you're sending a strong message that they're not welcome here, and that if you want to protect yourself and your family, it's time to get out of town. 854 rank-and-file police officers have the ability to leave today. This doesn't send the right message. We should be working together to resolve issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the public comment period. I'm going to call with 2:46, the same number you had before, Mr. Rosedal, to continue your questioning.
And thank you, Mr. President. You're running a great meeting, Tom. I appreciate it very much. Look, this is a very tough issue. I get a call from Pat McCosker, 7:30 this morning, saying my blood pressure is up. Of course, I worry about blood pressure all the time, and so he told me the story. So first, I want to go back to you, Miguel. We go forward, and we have the management right for both healthcare and retirement. I don't want to lay off any cops, I don't want to furlough any more employees. What kind of a revenue stream can we get from this process going forward that will help us close our budget gap and put us in a position that I've been saying since day one, we have to pay more in our healthcare and more in our retirement? I don't want another employee furloughed or laid off. I'm willing to bite the bullet, and I know all employees would rather stay if they knew that they could stay and provide a service to the citizens. I also know from my constituent base, all the time, they talk about their realities, and they wonder if their tax dollars are going to services. Look, we got a great cop in Charlie Beck, and what he's done for me on the West Side has been phenomenal. We have a great fire department, and what they've done for us has been terrific. But I also realize that I don't want to furlough anybody, I don't want to lay off anybody. Is this our strategy to get in that direction so we can move forward with our services by paying more in our healthcare and more in our retirement?
I'll answer by sharing what we did with the coalition. As I indicated, a 4% contribution, when you combine both the special funds and the general funds, provides $40 million immediately to the city. That helps provide, reduce the pressure for layoffs and furloughs. When combined with all of the elements of the agreement, it's between $65 and $70 million. So there's certainly ways of mitigating layoffs and furloughs that was demonstrated through that particular agreement. So I think that there's an opportunity citywide to try to pursue that as a strategy, and that's one of the principles that you've asked us to pursue. Our job is to provide you recommendations that help you generate savings, both in the short term and the long term, and this is one of those recommendations that does that. And our preference would be, of course, to find a middle ground in a way that we protect that benefit at the same time provides us a savings, and I'm, you know, optimistic that we could get there.
And why are we doing this today, from your opinion?
We're doing this today because of the timing. In order to be able to make a change as soon as possible, there has to be some direction given to the Lasers Board in particular, so that it reflects in the bill that we're going to have to pay starting July 1st. And so it's, it's partly to try to give you the option of being able to generate those savings in light of next year's fiscal crisis.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosedal. As we call the next speaker, I do want to recognize courtesy of Bruce Gilman of our Los Angeles Department of Transportation class from the Carlethorpe School here to understand local government. Please welcome the young people from West Los Angeles Santa Monica area. Welcome to City Hall. A fine welcoming councilwoman from the 50th Masson.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate all the hard work that's gone into all of our efforts to move forward and balance our budget, but deal with the structural deficit that is looming. I really want to thank the coalition and the mayor for, you know, working really hard around the clock to come up with an agreement that works, and we really hope that the members will ratify this. My experience so far in these negotiations has been, I believe that we get a better end product when everybody stays at the table and negotiates. I have always believed that. I know that many times, you know, strategies have to be used for a certain reason. I will tell you that I am uncomfortable today voting for this permanent freeze or three-year freeze at this time while they're at the table negotiating. It, it does feel like it's not, it sounds like we can, this is our right, we can instruct the city attorney to draft this ordinance as a last resort. My feeling is that last resort is not here yet. And so my feeling is, I do believe for us to take this action today might impede the negotiations or sort of certainly not help the negotiations. So with that, colleagues, I would like to move that we continue this item for a week, allow all the parties to stay at the table and negotiate, and then give us an update, you know, obviously sooner than that, on the direction we need to take. But just looking at the past times that we've gotten to what were perceived as impasses, I honestly feel like our city employees, sworn personnel, the civilians have really believed that it's their city, too. They love this city. Again, we've gotten tremendous concessions, we do have a change going forward in pensions as a result of the agreement, certainly by, by the sworn and civilians. So we are making these tough decisions. I just, I think our style works better when we keep everybody at the table and we negotiate a better end project, product, because everyone has bought into it. So with that, colleagues, I'd like to move...
Yeah, I got that. Would you have a second for Ms. Hahn's motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Weezaw, first it on the key, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Mr. Coretts said something that I agree with, and it's a rare occasion sometimes around here, we don't want to be doing this, this is not something we wanted to do. But there's nothing we've done in the last year and a half that I think any of us ever were elected to office and wanted to do. We've been challenged to do things that other, like officials, have not done ever in the history of this city because of the circumstances we're confronted with. With that being said, we have to realize that the people want reform in our way our pension systems are. We just saw on the ballot, the Measure G, which passed, being replaced in fire, overwhelmingly passed. If you look at any poll in the country, no matter what state, from Wisconsin to Los Angeles, says the same thing, people want reform in the pension systems and the benefits that we give that go along with that. And the benefit we have in our health plan is something that's a rare benefit. You don't find these benefits in the private sector anymore, they're gone, and they're disappearing on a daily basis around this country. What is left, and the only left sector that has these kind of benefits, is the public sector. We're asking our union friends, and I do have friends in the union, and some are sitting right there, we're asking them to step up to the plate and help us solve this problem by saying to public, we're doing some reform, we're trying to get something out of this, but we need their participation. Now, to Ms. Hahn's motion, delay doesn't help us. I think if we go forward today, and we need to go forward today with an instruction that gives the time to have those discussions you want to have, and I think that's very important. It is not unknown to those folks that this was coming. I've had discussion with senators on these very points. So this is not coming out of nowhere. The fact that we've not sat down and negotiated is truly the issue, but we have that right, by the way. It is our right to do that. So if we are wanting to afford them the opportunity to sit at the table, I think passing this today and moving forward instructs the city attorney to begin the process and lets us sit down with those union friends and have that discussion before we finally get around to voting on it. That's the statement we need to make to the people of Los Angeles, that we are elected to preserve and protect the treasury of this city as well as to work with our union partners. And this gives us that opportunity to do that. We must take that action. Also, it says to our friends in the coalition, that we meant what we said, we made the deal, and we are standing by that deal, and we're not going to try and undercut that deal, that we need to have complete reform. They are willing to step forward and give more. We're asking for more, they're giving more. Let's not insult them by saying, well, we're not going to have the police and fire do that as well. Everybody needs to step forward on this issue. I can tell you, I've had discussion with my wife, because I am retiring in two months, on what it means, and the value of this benefit is huge. But we also recognize that in the economy of the world we're in today, it is a benefit that is costing the taxpayers of this city enormous amounts of money, and time for reform is here. They told us with Prop G, Measure G, they want reform. We have said to the news media, we are reforming, we have made a deal with the coalition, we are reforming. I ask that our friends in the union, let us go forward today with the instruction, and then come sit with us tomorrow or tonight if it has to start tonight. But let's begin the process, and that's what we have to do today. That is our fiduciary responsibility, is what Mr. Rosedal's been telling us for three years, we must do this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge the members of the police and fire union that are here on behalf of their membership, and I think that we need to be candid with them. They've been candid with us, and we have to play on the level field. When it came to the pension reform, they could have fought it, and they didn't. They were supportive of it. They didn't oppose it, they worked with us with it. And what troubles me oftentimes, and no disrespect to you, Miguel, but we treat them as friends and allies one day, and the next day, we kind of throw them away. And I think we need to maintain consistency with them to say, we will work with you, these are the numbers. We can't continue with the same pattern. What are we going to do to make it better? And they're not resistant to that. The fact that they're here showing that they want to work with us, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that. I understand what Mr. Smith is saying, and we owe the taxpayers the dues in service and benefits, but those are done by our municipal employees, police, fire, sanitation, other departments. And we can't just say, we love you today, and tomorrow, we disregard you. And I think oftentimes in the past, we have done that, which creates that gap, that wedge. We need to bridge the relationship. They're not here protesting, and I've been here in the past, when I've seen the protests, where they come in en masse, and they're protesting and they're upset. We don't want to get to that. They know we're hurting financially, we've got a $350 million deficit, we know we need to fix it for next fiscal year. And they're not, they're not opposed to what we're trying to say. So I think what we need to do is not pass it today, but work with them and come up with a plan that's going to be beneficial, and not try and shove it down their throat, and then afternoon you're at the table negotiating a contract. Fire hasn't had a contract for over a year, police contract's up the end of this, end of June. I think we just need to be candid and say, folks, we need your assistance with it, we need to make some changes, and let's do it together, instead of the path we're going. Because I don't think if we do it this way, it's going to maintain that relationship that's been built over a long period of time. So I think we need to continue it and work with them in a candid fashion. They're not saying we have the money, we're hiding it, and we know it's escalating, they realize that, too. But we really need to do it in a fashion that's honest and both sides of the table come together.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, followed by Mr. Garcetti to close.
I'm not sure which direction we go, but let's face it, we are in a quandary, and let's talk about exactly what that quandary is. We have negotiated a deal with the coalition. They recognize there are a lot worse things that could happen to them, such as having this kind of a freeze on their healthcare. They've come up with a very responsible compromise that I think works for everybody. What they, I think, want to see is that every other bargaining unit's going to have to do the same thing. So hence, hence this proposal, which is designed to do that. At the same time, what this proposal does is it, it treats the remaining bargaining units with a certain amount of disrespect. So we're saying, if we pass this, we know you're standing in a room with a guillotine, but, and you know what you're facing, but instead, we're going to raise the guillotine, and we're going to put your head on the chopping block and make it clear exactly what you're Neither one of these is a good situation. So I'm not sure which direction we should go in. But if we don't pass this today, I think we still need to send a very clear message to the members of the coalition that we are going to have to do something if your deal doesn't pass. I'm sure it'll be worse than what your deal is. I think what was negotiated is something that is a win-win... I think what was negotiated is something that is a win-win for everybody in these terrible times. At the same time, I don't know that I'm totally comfortable with, with having the disrespect of raising a guillotine and putting everyone's heads on it and saying, we're going to put this sledgehammer over your head, and you have to do it that way. Sledgehammer, guillotine, whatever the analogy. I don't know if that's necessary. I think, just in the short time I've been here, I've seen us take both approaches. One year, we're negotiating with the unions in good faith, the next year, we're laying them off and furloughing them in some cases where it's not necessary. I would agree with Ms. Hahn that I've seen a better result when we work with them, and when we don't put the sledgehammer over their heads first, and we actually come to the table and try to come up with a decent result. So, I mean, I've been here struggling with this, you know, as we all have. I'm inclined to think, we send the message, we want to see significant concessions from every bargaining unit, it's going to have to happen, but I'm not sure that we have to treat the units here with the level of disrespect that passing this measure I think would imply. So at this point, I think we should just continue this. In fact, I might even suggest perhaps that we return this to, to my committee and personnel for further analysis.
I don't know if there's a second to that, but we have Mr. Weezar who wants to step up for the first time.
Not a motion, just a thought to consider among other things.
I don't know if there's a second thought to that, but here's Mr. Weezar.
Thank you. I seconded Ms. Hahn's motion because it reminded me of last year's budget process, where we came head-on directly against our unions without incorporating them initially in our discussions. And that led to, I think, some pretty difficult times for us, where I think we could have found solutions to our budget crisis a lot sooner if we bring people to the table and get them involved. Ms. Hahn's motion asks for one week. I think if we look around this horseshoe, we know that all of us want reform, the voters want reform, and we are going to do reform. But in order for us to move forward and not cause more problems for us, I think a week is not a lot to ask for. It's better for us to continue these negotiations, sit down with the other labor unions that we have not gotten their full say in on this item, feel comfortable that we come back a week later, that we gave them another shot. I'd rather wait a week and say, hey, we listened, we gave it another shot, and then let's come back and see where we are. But people are asking us to sit down and talk. On one week, that's not going to make a difference. That's not a whole lot to ask for.
Ms. Perry for the first time.
Okay, quick question. Mr. Santana, tell me about the process, and why, why are these comments being made that they're not having the opportunity to talk and negotiate? Tell me what the status is, and what the schedule is, and what's going on to date? And is there, has there been a foreclosure of opportunity for these representatives to interact with the CAO's office to continue the negotiations? Has that been stopped? Is there some sort of a termination of that discussion?
I won't go into the specifics of negotiations.
Okay. Whatever you can say.
Yeah, but we have been meeting with, with most of the various bargaining units on the civilian and on the sworn side. Some of them are further along than others. We see this fundamentally different. We see this, as the council president indicated, as a, as a right that management has. And we specifically are recommending that should we reach an agreement with any of the bargaining units, that we provide an exemption to the policy that is being recommended to allow for those retiree benefits to continue to grow in the way that we've established with the Coalition, the unions, should that agreement be ratified. So, you know, I start off by saying that I'm optimistic about our ability to get there, and, and, you know, I think, I'm hopeful that we will. It is our responsibility to provide you options. Should I, if we chose to wait until after the fiscal year, then you wouldn't have the ability to generate, say, means next fiscal year or the year after. It's already difficult to do so on the fire and police side. We still have a small opportunity left on the, on the civilian side. That explains the timing of this particular initiative at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. President, it's with heavy heart, I'm standing here now. I've been on this council for six years, and I've got to tell you, I've been saying pensions and health care reform since the day I got here. And frankly, if we approve this today, which is what we should do, we have the timeframe to work out the details that need to be worked out. But for God's sake, if we just don't go forward with this, we could end up furloughing cops, which I don't want to furlough any cops. I don't know where any nickels or dimes are hiding in any drawers anymore. There is no other options for our great city than to take the lead of what happened with the Coalition leadership that went public. I saw Jerry Brown there feeling bad, cutting all these social services, and then I saw Eric Garcetti and, and the labor unions and, and the mayor saying, hey, we were able to figure out how to go from 6% on retirement to 11. We're willing to go to 4% on health care. I saw 68 million come in there, short-term, and maybe 300 million over three or four years. For God's sake, if we don't go this approach, we're going to have to go the other approach. And I don't want any more furloughs or layoffs. And I think the police and fire have been in discussions with us off and on and up and down about this issue for years. And frankly, they're representing their rank and file and doing a great job. That's their job, is to fight for their people. But it is our job to fight for the overall goodwill of the city. We don't need to send any signals to anybody, but we want to work out the details on this. We'll come back in a month, and then we'll see if there's disagreement, and we'll deal with it. I don't want no week, nothing. I need it now to send a message to everybody in this city. If we don't pay more in our health care and, and more in our retirement, we're just going to lose more basic services, and I've had enough of losing basic services throughout this great city. So please bite the bullet, show some courage, and vote for us to go forward with it now. And in 30 days, we'll come back with something, and if the unions don't like it, they can come up here and scream and yell, and we can make a decision at that point. But we don't need any more time on this. Time has run out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Garcetti to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard a lot of different things around the horseshoe today on this issue. I've heard some very strong terms, and I know it's not unique to this issue. We sometimes use larger metaphors than, than suit the situation. I've heard bayonet, sledgehammer, guillotine. I want to be clear that what we're talking about here, if there is, and I don't think those are, those might be a little bit too violent metaphors, but if there is a problem here, it is not the retiree health care, it is the deficit. That is what hangs over us, folks. It is the deficit, not a proposal to close the deficit, because if it's not this, the next day it's something else. And there's going to be levels of disrespect, there's going to be talk about what this does. We have a responsibility to close that deficit and to do that early. That's what we're elected to do, it's the most respectful thing we can do to our employees, it's the best thing that we can do to our constituents. So when we stand up and kind of talk about, like, let's be clear, there's, there are levels of disrespect, and then there are levels of disrespect. And trumping both also, because I do believe very much in respect, and I feel like I can stand here and say this to my friends that are out there, because whether it was a UFLAC contract that nobody else believed in, and that I went out on a minority report and got through and got the ratification, I've earned the ability to say that. Whether it's PPL on a work schedule that wasn't always so popular, looking at making sure lunch breaks were the way they are, standing up to make sure you were listened to and respected when nobody, when you felt nobody else was, on studying what the tiers were going to be for a new contribution, sorry, new pension tier. I've been there, and I'll continue to treat you with the respect that I believe you deserve. But I also will treat each one of you and the people that we represent with the respect of telling the truth, which is here we have before us, not on this matter, not taking, taking this issue up to club anybody over the heads. But let's be clear that we can pretend that the, the sword that is hanging over our heads is this issue. It is not this issue. This is a proposed solution for the main issue, which is the deficit. Now, do I believe we can negotiate the end of that deficit? I do. I believe that, that our friends out here and our CAO, with some guidance and leadership from all of us, can do that. We did do that with the Coalition. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for pointing that out. And I'd like to add one person whose name hasn't been mentioned much at all, Anna Guoel, my chief of staff, who, you know, reports don't always cover this, but was representing the Council every single day in those negotiations, and did an extraordinary job of bringing together folks and working with our CAO to make sure that happened. And I want to thank her from the bottom of my heart, because she represented this entire Council as the chief of staff for the president of the Council. I do believe we can negotiate that. It's not going to be the end of the world if something passed here to date to begin to draft something. But I also have heard from folks, they're saying, we want some time to have those questions answered. That's why I stood up and said, we have to, and you have to say what you believe, and I did hear that from almost everybody who stood up, that we do have the right to do this. But we have to take the second step, which is, are you prepared to if we don't get something at the table? I don't lead with that negotiation. It isn't a way of threatening, it isn't something I do so that I can, you know, get people more scared, because I know sometimes the reaction to that is exactly what we had today. It's digging the heels even more. And I do always want to listen to that and consider where that comes from, because I think it comes from a real place. That said, it isn't their responsibility to balance our budget at the end of the day. The people in the city of Los Angeles don't look to each of our unions and say, you guys failed. They will look to us. They will say, what did you do? So I'm not against the picking apart of certain things to point out, that's why I had suggested before there was a motion that maybe a week, we could look at this. I suggested that in the opening comments, not to score points with anybody, but to give respect, but also to be clear that we will continue momentum forward. Not to send it to a committee where it would die, and, and I'm not saying that you would kill it, Mr. Kretz, in committee, but I just think the external optics usually, you do send things to committee where they at least slow down for a long time. But we have a responsibility to make sure this continues to have some momentum. It's a momentum I would like to stop. It was a momentum that I would like to see some other solution to, but I think that the truest way you show to be yourself a friend is not to, to stand up and say something that's going to cause you guys to applaud me, but to work out something which we can all agree upon, which I went into the audience and talked to you guys about, which is, let's, if we take a week right now, a week from now, we have to be prepared to move forward on a vote depending on where things are. And if people want to get an update on where negotiations are, we should get that in closed session. So let's do that on Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, have this back before us. Now, I know that's not your ideal, because that means you're going to be thinking about that and what's going to be happening, but we will be better informed on a Tuesday of where we are at. We won't have the what-ifs about what's going to be happening with the Coalition deal. They need the Coalition deal to be ratified as much as the Coalition workers need it to be ratified. And, Mr. Kretz, you are exactly right, and that logic has to be told to every single person. I've been going to employee meetings, I'm going to be going to another one, I think today, I went across the street with folks saying, why the heck should I vote for this thing? Why should I give 4% more when my union believes potentially that this is a vested right, I already have retiree health care? It's because the strength that we have together is saying, you don't, and getting our city attorney on the record, and I can call up the city attorney to say this on the record, but it's what we have been told unequivocally, that this is not a vested right. I'll, I'll give you the language. The current retiree health subsidy is a vested benefit, but the discretionary adjustment that increases the benefit is not. And so we can talk to folks about getting that if they give something, and that's a fair exchange for the people of LA, for our employees, that's a fair exchange. But if we don't get the members of the Coalition to recognize as well, and I think they will, I've had great conversations with city workers, you know, there are city workers, I'll say this publicly, because I've said it in the meetings too, if you're a senior city employee who's not furloughed right now, you could decide to say, forget it, I'm going to take my raise, and somebody else is going to get laid off, and somebody else is going to get furloughed. But if you believe that the other person who works right next to you, the engineer, for instance, who happens to be from general-funded position instead of special fund position, shouldn't be furloughed and potentially lose their home or, or their car, or the junior employee who's a really great rising star shouldn't lose their job, then you should ratify what's before you that's been negotiated by your leadership. It hasn't been imposed upon them by us. We've negotiated this in good faith. And I believe that, that's what you guys want too. That's what you want. And I believe we can get it. But my message to you is, don't be so scared. I understand why there is fear, and I understand the pressure you have from your men and women. But I want to say it publicly too, to them as much as to you, don't be scared. It's not that we're leading with this, and we're not trying to use this as a negotiating tactic. This is a backup plan if we can't reach that. And we might have some other backup plans, they all stink. I mean, they could be furloughing police officers and firefighters, and I know that would be even more war. You would be here, I wouldn't expect anything less from you. You'd be derelict in your duty if you didn't come here and fight us on each one of those things. But at the end of the day, we have to balance the budget somehow. It can't just be on the back of civilians, it can't be done unfairly on the backs of our sworn. So this gives us the space and the place to do that. So that would be my recommendation. I know some folks want to have the vote, whether we're going to continue or not. I would send two messages here clearly today. To the Coalition, to our sworn unions, we believe very strongly that this is a vested right. And the last time we fought on a disagreement like this was over furloughs, and we won. Now, do we want to furlough people anymore? Or do we want to impose this on anybody? No. But we do want to balance the budget. And so we hope this scopes what the piece is. I want the CAO to be as honest with you as they were the Coalition, this is your number, bring us the number of how we fix that. And I know that's what you guys wanted to be doing today, and thinking hard about that. So I want to give you that space and place and recognize that today. But I also think that we have to continue to have a sense of urgency about this, because we also know that negotiations, not through any fault of your own, but we've been around here long enough, folks, that negotiations can be five months into the year.
Okay.
Five months into the year, and they're still ongoing. And we have to have this balanced, not just by July 1st, but when we do our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That completes the speaker's queue. Madam Clerk, we have before a motion by Hahn Weezar, and also comments by Mr. Garcetti on the motion. Mr. Garcetti, what we have before us, Madam Clerk.
Before you is the Councilwoman Hahn's motion to continue item 21 for one week.
Before, Mr. Garcetti. Two different options on that.
Say it again.
There's two different options on that, and I can put it forward in a motion if folks would want to, but I'd want to do this in consultation with everybody. We can, we can, I think I was clear in my last speech, maybe I needed to make a motion at the end. We can have that vote. Votes will send signals, split votes will send bad signals in all sorts of ways, in both directions, is my opinion. So I had suggested that we, that we move for one week, we go into closed session on Tuesday and get an update on where we are with our sworn negotiations, and Wednesday we'd be prepared to vote on moving forward a drafting, a drafting of this. Now, I know some folks, and I think it's important for them, that would be my motion today.
I'll second that.
So, you get a question there, that would be a substitute motion to Ms. Hahn's motion?
Not a substitute, it's another motion.
It's another motion.
To me, that's what continuing one week does. I mean, it comes back before us, and we would be willing to move forward with it at that point.
I was specifying, the difference is, I specify on Tuesday we get an update in closed session, because we couldn't do that today. We looked into doing that, because that was a question that people had on the sworn negotiations. Yeah? So people know what the timeline is, what numbers we're talking about, what we're looking at, and you can do your own math comparing what the CAO has put together on this.
And then we have the opportunity to move forward on that.
And then Wednesday, this piece, this recommendation from the CAO would be back here in Council.
Right, that's.
So that's more than a week on that. The two differences, it's eight days on one, and it's a different thing that we're adding to the Tuesday meeting.
So, Ms. Hahn, that, and then would you want to withdraw your motion, or go with Mr. Garcetti's motion?
I can't in good faith, after I said to them, we don't, if we don't have the votes, that was the way to do it, and I'd be strong myself.
You're continuing it till next Wednesday. That's what you're asking for.
This piece and something else agenda is for Tuesday on the update.
Right, that's fine.
That's fine. So, Ms. Hahn, withdraws her motion, we're going to take Mr. Garcetti's motion.
I'm fine with it going down.
Ms. Hahn, do you want anything? You did push your speaker guy, you're okay? You're fine, Ms. Hahn?
I respect that.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, you have something you want to add to it?
Um, I want to, what's the substantive difference between voting on this today, giving instructions, a draft, negotiations continue versus Tuesday? What is, what is the significance of Tuesday? Other than, you will brief us anyway. I believe we're going to have an E R C meeting Thursday? Anyway? You still have that window open because you're in draft status, not in permanent draft status. So what's the difference? I think, you know, I think what I find so frustrating is, you know, we're dancing around the obvious, and I'm not sure why people are uncomfortable, but, you know, I can't stand here and judge other people, but I really need to know what the difference is.
From what I understand, the difference is, number one, there was a discussion about having an update on labor negotiations. You asked for one as well. The city attorney has a point that that needs to be posted adequately, and so what this would allow would be negotiations to occur between now and then, and a specific agenda for labor negotiations updated in closed session on Tuesday. The other difference would be that the city attorney won't begin drafting the motion until after directly do so. So it defers that decision for one week.
But if we are in draft status anyway, so we tell the city attorney to go ahead and start drafting, when you're in draft, draft can be revised, correct? We take further action subsequent to whatever action we take today, that can be included in the drafting after we've given instructions. The instructions can be amended. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's kind of like six, it's largely symbolic, correct? Am I, maybe I don't want to put you in that position, never mind. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Before you is a motion by Councilmember Garcetti to continue this item for one week, for the item to be agenda is on Tuesday in closed session for an update, and agenda is on Wednesday for a vote.
Thank you very much. There's no speakers on the point of information for Ms. Hahn.
I just want to make sure we are not moving to draft the ordinance. Is that correct? Right.
No, not moved.
So my motion was to continue it for a week. Your motion is to continue it for a week in closed session.
Closed session on Tuesday in council on Wednesday.
Huh? No, no, I just want to, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify what your motion is. I didn't understand that.
For the third time, it's that we would go on Wednesday with this item, and we would get a briefing the day before in closed session on where we are in our negotiations with our sworn unions.
So this item is continued till Wednesday?
Till Wednesday.
Right.
Everybody assumes the same thing. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti, so what's before us? Mr. Garcetti's motion, Mr. Alakon.
Point of clarification. Did, did the motion, the Garcetti motion include a drafting?
No, it did not.
It did not? Okay, thank you.
Did not. Point of information. Ms. Hahn asked that, too. All right, here we got before us right now is that motion, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, yes.
No one on the speaker's queue? We're going to open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Eleven ayes, three noes. So that's the action of the council move forward. Thank you. Next item.
Item number 20 is still before you.
On 20, okay. What's before us on 20, Madam Clerk?
Item number 20 is a C A O report recommendation to approve amendment number one to the 2009-10 M U for the firefighters and fire captains representing...
Good. And, Mr. Garcetti, you're on the speaker's queue on this. This is item 20. No, move approval. Move approval on item 20. No one else on the speaker's queue? Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Madam Clerk, anything else before us?
Item number 26 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
You're up. Oh. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd just like to ask the public's assistance on a homicide case that has occurred in the 8th district and would like to offer a $50,000 reward for information on the incident that occurred on April 15th, 2010. At approximately 3:30 a.m., Tina Marie Sanchez, a 41-year-old female, was discovered lying dead in an alley at the back of 3220 West 73rd Street. L A P D is still searching for the suspects, encourages witness to come forward, even anonymously, to assist in this investigation, and there's a sum of $50,000 reward. Anyone that has information on these circumstances are asked to contact Detective Eric Crossen, Criminal Gang Homicides, at 213-485-1383. Yes, I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Also for I T A in the future, could we have the telephone number scrawled on this when this is, these amendments come up? This matter, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not embarrassing.
Open the roll.
They have no...
No cards on it?
But they don't even pretend to have that.
Let's open the roll.
Don't even pretend.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
The council has motions for postinary furlough.
So ordered.
There are excuses at the desk.
Let me hear.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on May 4th for city business, and that meets council policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Coretts requests to be excused on June 14th for city business, and that meets council policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Rosendale requests to be excused on May 24th, 25th, and 31st for personal business, and that meets council policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused on May 10th, 11th, 13th, 17th, 18th, 20th, 24th, and 31st for personal business, and that meets council policy.
Not ordered. No, I'm kidding. You're okay, Janice. Okay.
That clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Any announcements, members? Any announcements, announcements, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to announce a very important event that just occurred. The NASA Administrator, General Bolden, announced today that the California Science Center was one of the four institutions that was chosen for the permanent display of one of the space shutters. Our motion, Mr. LeBonds and I put forth in July of last year, was one of the things that the city went on record, and they made a four designations, of which the city of Los Angeles probably will accept this particular display at the California Science Center.
Thank you very, Mr. Parks, for your great leadership for exposition park. Mr. Alakon.
I just wanted to announce that the jobs committee will meet at 1:30 upstairs instead of 1 o'clock. Obviously, we couldn't meet at 1. Secondly, just want to wish happy birthday to Rick Orloff, and I think my colleagues would like to join on that. He's not here, but I'm sure he's listening.
Well, we could do an editorial. We'd say the best reporter City Hall has, right? Anybody object to that? The dean. The dean. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Like to announce and congratulate Mayor Virogosa Ed Reyes, Eric Garcetti, and all those Jan Perry involved with Siquez La Villa, a great event of 100,000 people enjoyed cycling through the city of Los Angeles. And thank the Los Angeles County Bike Coalition and also Alex Baum for all the great work he does. Any other announcements? Let's all rise for adjourning motions. All rise, Sergeant. Mr. Garcetti.
Rosendale and I, together, would like to adjourn in memory of Cam Cuada, who passed away, a friend to many of us. I'm sure Ms. Hahn, as well, has some words to say, but a friend to so many people in this room and a powerful force in politics in our government here in Los Angeles and California nationally. Cam grew up in Sierra Madre, went on to graduate from U S C. At age six, he was altering bumper stickers that said "Democrats for Nixon" to read "Rats for Nixon." Cam went to Washington, D.C. after college to join the staff of Senator Allen Cranston as a mail clerk, and he rose to become the senator's spokesman. He launched himself to the heights of his profession as Cranston's 1984 presidential campaign spokesman and the voice of his hard-fought 1986 reelection victory against Ed Shaw. If you remember those ads that said "Shaw." We still remember them today. But he did a great job re-electing his boss. He counted among many of his clients and friends Governor Gray Davis, Lieutenant Governor Leo McCarthy, Congresswoman Jane Harmon, Congressman Bob Matsuji, as well as, of course, Jim Hahn. He steered Senator Feinstein's election to the Senate in 1992, remained until his death one of her closest advisors. And here in Los Angeles, he was the chief advisor to Mayor Jim Hahn, the successful 2002 campaign to keep the city together. We owe him a huge debt of gratitude to keeping L.A. whole. 2008, he was tapped as program director for the Democratic National Convention. He orchestrated the entire program at the 2008 historic convention that nominated and sent Barack Obama on his way to becoming president. And the president yesterday, with the first lady, issued their condolences as well, noting that efforts on his behalf were critical, and the convention he managed truly captured the spirit of his unprecedented campaign. Mayor Hahn yesterday spoke of Cam's wisdom and sense of humor. Whether Cam was with you or against you, you couldn't help but respect him and like him. He used to bump into him in the hallways here, and he kind of wanted to know what the gossip was, and he'd give you some cranky old man thing to say that, when he realized was just this beautiful pool of wisdom. And he saw things, I think, from the eyes of the regular guy. You know, he really listened to people on the street. When he'd interact with elected officials while he was of that world, he didn't spend most of his time in this world. He spent most of his time outside, so that advice he gave was so valuable. Yesterday, his Democratic presidents and senators and mayors remembered Cam, so did Republican strategists, and most notably reporters from across the country. And he was certainly quotable. Whether it was in a strategy session or the press, he gave it straight. He pulled no punches. He was a trusted advisor and a source, and he was a mentor in the truest sense of the word. I met with him just a few months ago in my office, and he was kind of giving everybody a sense of where Angelenos were right now. But he always loved you behind that. He pushed you to be better. He was a cynic, but underneath that cynicism, I think, was a deep love for people, for places, and for the democratic process. And he understood how to connect with voters. You know, with a twinkle in his eye and a bow tie around his neck, he would, you know, give you great advice, and he enjoyed that political gamesmanship. Fine cigar, good food and drink, above all other pursuits, golf. But his life was truly driven by a passion for making our city, state, and nation a better place. And so today, we remember Cam Cuada, true gentleman, survived by his mother, brother, and a vast network of true friends. Services are pending. All members.
I'd rather have Ms. Hahn go before I do.
Oh, well, thank you. And Eric, that was a great tribute to Cam, and I consider him a dear friend of mine as well and of our families, and he was really close to my brother, and, but he also worked on a couple of my campaigns as well. And, you know, he just had such a great, as you said, just a sense of reality and a sense of politics and a sense of the human condition. And he was always such a gentleman. I really loved talking to him. I loved being in strategy meetings with him. He was such a gentleman. And to see him with his signature bow tie, it just was always sort of a comforting thing about Cam. He was kind of unchanging, but very smart, very strategic. And I know Senator Feinstein, I heard, was extremely devastated by this loss. Some of our campaign consultants and strategists become more than that. They actually do become our friends, and some of them become part of our families. And Cam really was one of those. We will certainly, certainly miss him. He was truly one of the good ones, and we'll miss him, and our condolences to his family. It's just a tragedy. He was young. He was only 57 years old, and I do know that he did love to play golf. He and some of his other campaign consultant buddies would take trips to play golf, and he tried to play on the weekends locally here at some of our golf courses. So we're really going to miss Cam. What a gentleman, and that was a fine tribute that you gave him.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendale.
Let me just say, I've known him for 30 years, and he was a class act. He was a true professional. Even when I had a little issue with one of these big shots that he elected, he was able to find a way to connect us back together again. He used to come on my show. He used to bring guests on the show. And, you know, even most recently, he's a condo owner, was right there in my neighborhood there in Venice, and there was an issue that the people in the condo complex had with the development project down below. He took leadership on it. He sat with me on it, just like he would for somebody running for president or senator, whatever it was. But it's always a pleasure when you're with somebody that speaks their mind, but with integrity, class, and mannerisms. And in this tough political world we're in all the time, you don't find enough of that kind of classiness. He was a class act, and like we do know, all we have is the moment. Too premature, only 57 years old, but boy, did he make an impact on all of us all those years. May he rest in peace.
Yes, on that, too, he was a very special man, Cam Cuada. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonds. And I'd like to adjourning motion for Ms. Loma White, who is one of my senior field deputies in memory of her sister, Pearl Mae King. She was a 9th district resident, and she was 65 years old, and she was ill for quite a long time. She was the oldest of 12 children and a woman of great faith, and was associated with the Church of God in Christ located in the 9th council district. Her incredible faith and commitment to helping her community will be remembered by all those who knew her. Her wisdom and service helped many local young people gain confidence and success in their lives. And to Loma, on behalf of the 9th council district and to your entire family, I'd like to join in remembering and celebrating Pearl Mae King, her life and the great legacy that she leaves behind. She will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Escobio Peter Felton, affectionately known as Eske, born in 1933, passed away April 2011. He attended Xavier Preparatory and graduated from Holy Rosemary Institute in Lafayette, Louisiana. In 1953, entered the U.S. Army, served in Germany, and in 57, he moved to Los Angeles and began working as a painter. Excuse me. In 63, he became, began working with L.A. Unified, where he became a supervisor of painters and furniture refinishers. For over 20 years, he taught at L.A. Trade Tech, and in 97, he retired from L.A. USD while teaching at Trade Tech. He's an active member that communicated to many charities, organizations, and supported the View Park in greater Los Angeles community. He was an active member of the Autocrats West, the Crescent City Lodge, and the Lunch Bunch at L.A. Unified School District. He was devoted family person and also many community services, and will be dearly missed. He survived by his wife and children and a host of other relatives, and his funeral services will be Thursday, April 14th, at St. Bernadette's Catholic Church at 3825 Don Felipe at 12 noon.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to also adjour today in the memory of Hi Manten, who passed away in Woodland Hills this past Saturday at the age of 83. Hi was born in Brooklyn in 1927, and he proudly served our country in two wars abroad, the Korean War and World War II. Hi had a real zest for life. He practiced as a C P A for nearly 40 years, and he was married to the love of his life, Marilyn Manten, for over 50 years, and she preceded him in death two years ago. He leaves behind his two daughters, Judy Manten Jacobson and Jill Manten, along with his four grandchildren, David, Julian, Alex, and Noah. His grandson, Dave Jacobson, is currently on leave from my council staff and is serving as my campaign manager. as my campaign manager. So the services for his grandfather are happening today at 2 o'clock at Mount Sinai Memorial Park.
Thank you, Ms. Hamer, the rest in peace. Mr. Rosaldal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions, colleagues. One is Frida Marlin. Frida Marlin was a Lincoln Place apartment tenant since 1983. She passed away on Sunday morning about 7:15 from a heart failure. She was 87 years old. She was born in 1923 in Brooklyn, New York. Her New York accent was unmistakable. Frida married her late husband David, a World War II pilot, in 1943, and they were married for over 60 years. Frida was one of the key charter members of the Lincoln Place Tenants Association, and a staunch supporter of Lincoln Place tenants. She was a longtime holdout at Lincoln Place. After all the tenants were evicted in December of 2005, Frida held on her Lincoln Place Tenants Association meetings in her living room. When the Ellis Act was cited as a justification for eviction, she would always respond by saying "Ellish schmelish," which, of course, I agree with her 100%. Frida spent her final couple of years at the Jewish Home for the Aged. Her burial will be held at 2:00 PM on Thursday at Eden Memorial Park in Mission Hills, and memorial service will be held on May 1st at 1:00 PM at Lincoln Place. Frida is survived by her son Spike, who also lived at Lincoln Place, and numerous friends in the Venice area. May she rest in peace. She was an inspiration for me when I was battling for Lincoln Place, as I'm still battling for Lincoln Place. She was one of those energies there that just never gave up on what was right for the tenants. The second adjourning motion is Patricia Burke Tennant, who was to be soon Mark Antonio Grant's mother-in-law, and Mark Antonio Grant, my deputy, was at her bedside. She was born on November 24th in 1933 and raised in Scotland. Patricia Burke Tennant, with her husband and two sons, moved to the United States in May of 1955, settling in the Los Angeles Basin. One of her primary goals was to become an American citizen, which she did as soon as she was eligible to take her citizenship examination. While she always found it to be a tremendous honor to be a citizen of the United States of America, she made sure that her four children took pride in their Scottish heritage, and held nothing but respect for her fellow nationalized citizens who did the same, regardless to where they originated from. Serving on the behind-the-scenes backbone of her husband's successful contracting company, as well as being the material strength behind raising two sons and two daughters, Patricia realized the American dream. Through the ups and downs and the thick and thin of life within a family business, and embroiling the full beauty that comes with individual commitments to a team effort, she never wavered at being his primary source of encouragement, support, respect, and strength during 56 years of their years of married life together. She was a loving and compassionate person, who always brought out the best in those around her. It was a gift of herself that she freely gave to others, which motivated them to excel and succeed. Some of you might realize the verbiage on this is coming from Mark Antonio Grant, who had an incredible relationship with her. A devoted wife, a loving mother, a sister, an aunt, and a friend to all, she showed to all those who were fortunate enough to know her how the spirit which guides us is just as important as the passion which motivates us. She was a blessing to our entire community, and for those of us who knew and loved her, she is still a blessing in our lives. Patricia is survived by her husband, John Watson Tennant, her son, John Tennant, daughter Linda Patricia Tennant, and daughter Eileen Patricia Tennant Grant. Daughter-in-law, Maddie Tennant, son-in-law, Mark Antonio Grant, granddaughter Nicole Tennant, and great-granddaughter Patricia Simmons, and two great-grandchildren. She was preceded in death by her son Michael T. Tennant in 2003. A private graveside burial will be held tomorrow with her family.